Okay, we're getting to go ahead. We're gonna get started here in our city council meeting. Thank you, everyone, for joining us here in the council chambers in person and online and on YouTube television. We appreciate everybody being involved in their city meetings here in Spanish Fork and welcome all people and all viewpoints. We're gonna get started August 22nd, 2024, like we always do in Spanish Fork with a prayer and a pledge. And Councilman Took has a spiritual thought prayer for us, and then Councilwoman Beck will lead us in the pledge.
Thank you, Mayor. So for this evening's prayer message, I've asked a dear friend of mine and someone who I get to serve with in the Chamber of Commerce here in town, Rich Cope, and I see his beautiful wife has joined him this evening, and I just really appreciate you coming out and being here tonight with us, and so feel free to come on up and take it away.
Well, thank you, Landon, for giving me this opportunity. It's a little scary. I wasn't expecting all these people here, but... So Landon gave me some ideas about thought. He said you can talk about why you love the city, what's great about Spanish Fork, patriotic message, something along those lines. So since I talk to a lot of people on a daily basis and a lot of clients about why Spanish Fork is such a great place to live, I just jotted down some thoughts, things that I tell other families as I'm talking to them about why they should move to Spanish Fork. So number one, Spanish Fork has always been a well-run and well-managed city. We've always had really great city leadership who have used taxpayer dollars responsibly, in my opinion, and maintain balanced budgets. So I remember back when Marie Huff was mayor, and she used to come to our house all the time because my mom had a salon in our house, and she would do Marie's hair. And so Marie was always talking to us. She used to always call me Richard. I'd correct her all the time until I was just rich, but she'd still call me Richard. But she would always comment about how the city management was just awesome. She mentioned Dave Euler and Mary Claire at the time, who was the assistant city manager, and just had really high regard for them and the way they ran the city. And she also mentioned many of the other city staff as well. I also worked for Spanish Fork City for a few years as well, and so I got to witness firsthand that all the time that people put into managing the city and to doing their job well, and the countless hours that they put in, including the city council put in just a number of hours working on behalf of the citizens of Spanish Fork, and was just always really impressed with the job that they did. Number two that I wrote down is that we live in a beautiful city with clean streets and neighborhoods, beautiful parks, and recreational facilities. Number three is Spanish Fork has been ranked as the safest city, one of the safest cities in Utah. I think it was safe-wise that's ranked Spanish Fork, I think it's four years in a row, if I saw that correctly. But I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think Spanish Fork has also been ranked nationally as one of the safest cities to live in as well. Number four is I like the motto, "Pride and Progress," because I feel like it fits Spanish Fork so well, because our city officials have always been ahead of the curve, I feel like, when it comes to making our city stand out from all others, from being the very first to install cable TV and high-speed internet, which I was involved in when it first started, to being the first to start a drive-through light display on Christmas, having some of the best recreational facilities in the county, some of the best and most beautiful parks, in my opinion, and also the beautiful running and biking trails that we all have access to. And my favorite is that I feel like Spanish Fork really knows how to throw a party. I absolutely love Fiesta Days. I love everything about Fiesta Days, and my wife and I try to attend all the events because I think they're just, they're awesome. And number five that I put down is the city is still, the city is big enough that it has most everything that you need, with the exception of Al's. I'm still hoping for an Al's Sporting Goods. But it still has that small-town feel like it did when I was a kid, from allowing citizens to plant flowers on Main to sidewalk sales around Fiesta Days, movies at the park, the children's parade, the mayor and the city council being so involved in so many different community events, providing citizens with vouchers to support local businesses, and being involved in ribbon cuttings and grand openings with the Chamber of Commerce, which I'm a part of. Also, some of the businesses and buildings that are iconic to Spanish Fork, like our beautiful iconic city office building next door that have been around for many generations, and also some of the others include Two Jack's Pizza, Ken's Auto Body, Stone Drug, the iconic Main Street Movie Building, Zion's Bank, Cope's Boot and Shoe Repair, the old post office, and so many more wonderful iconic buildings that just really stand out. So lastly, I just wanted to just thank the staff and the mayor, the city council, everyone here for all the time and the effort that you all put into making our city a great place to live, because it really truly is a wonderful place to live, and I hear that all the time from a lot of people. And I know that you guys tend to get a lot of negative, you hear a lot of negative feedback from people, but just know that there are a lot of people out there who really, truly do appreciate everything that you guys do and all the time and the effort that you guys put into doing your job well. So kudos to each of you for all of your efforts and all that you do to make Spanish Fork a great place to live. So, I don't know, do I say the prayer now?
Yeah.
Okay. Our dear Father in Heaven, we are so very thankful to be gathered here today at this city council meeting, and we just ask that Thy Spirit and Thy guidance might be with the mayor, the city council, and all the city staff, that they might be guided and directed in all that they do on behalf of the citizens of this great city. And we pray for Thy protection upon all the leadership of the city and also those who serve and protect us, our police and our firefighters, please watch over and protect them as well. And we are so very thankful to Thee for all the many wonderful blessings that we have. We're grateful to live in this great state, in this great city, and for the freedoms that we all enjoy, and we ask and pray for these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Rich.
Thanks, Rich.
Okay, will everyone please rise and repeat the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Rich, for those comments, and thank you for starting us off with a prayer. Takes us to item four in our agenda, public comments section. This is a section of every meeting that we have where the public can come up and address the mayor and council if you can. Jack's got the timer up there for three minutes. If you can keep your comments to three minutes, we'd appreciate it. But if it's not, this is a time that if it's not on an agenda for a public hearing, you're more than welcome to come up and address the mayor and council of anything you'd like us to hear.
Hi. So the inland port, I think their consent or new item on the agenda later this evening, there's a roughly $75 million bond, which is to be used outside of the port area. Can I ask you to possibly please pump the brakes on it? Both myself and a lot of us out in that area would like to see the specific plans and details for it first. We've been led to believe that this is going to be impacting both my family and others, and there hasn't really been a full, honest, transparent, like, nothing's been shown to describe what that $75 million is going to be going towards, and we'd like to see it first. I understand that you guys may not technically have to have a public hearing on it with the kind of a loophole with it and the, by Cope, with the inland port being involved, but does that mean that you don't, or that you can't still have a meeting with everybody to give us an opportunity to talk about and discuss it? But I remember you guys acting like we were basically crazy when it first was rolling out, and you reassured us that it wouldn't be impacting agriculture, and you guys have over 2,500 acres in inland port, and the first thing you do is make a concept come to fruition is going beyond that and basically try to push everybody else around you out and expect us to move out of the way. You also keep making a point to claim that the city isn't condemning anybody and threatening eminent domain, which I guess technically is true, but you have the Richie Group acquiring property on your behalf and threatening eminent domain. And it's not as if the city doesn't already acquire property themselves all the time. So it looks questionable to us, just optics of it, but the last question is why have you not taken any of this to be reviewed first by the Act Protection Board or Commissioner Drug and Food when what you most certainly have been proposing is described as a transportation corridor and by statute you're restricted without their review and making any recommended modifications? I should not let my intrusive thoughts take over, but you guys kind of keep treating us as if we're inconsequential out there. I feel like we could do better. Can we facilitate a better conversation to happen going forward? Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes? Get your name, so Tara can get you on the record.
Yeah, James Berkey. So this is just, you know, kind of a thought that I had while I was driving up Main Street the other day. Is there any particular reason why we don't have any dedicated gun stores here in Spanish? And don't say Cowrich, because Cowrich doesn't really count. They got hay. I was just wondering, because if we don't, I think it'd be cool if I could possibly start one.
You said gun store?
Yeah, yeah, gun store.
I think there's actually one.
Oh, is there?
In Aaron Stern that owns it.
Not there anymore.
Yeah, it used to have it.
If it shut down, it's just been shut down within the last year.
Oh, really?
Yeah, he had a, he had like a back entrance into the store.
Yeah, 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 right there on this second, second north block.
So there's no ordinance, per se.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was wondering, so, because I'm just kind of tired of like always going up to Orem if I wanted to pick up something neat. All right, cool. Thanks.
Thanks, James.
James.
Anyone else? Okay, I think what the first resident was talking about is on our new business section of the meeting. Is that right, Dave? I'm looking, okay, all right. So we'll get to that as we get further down the agenda tonight to discuss more particulars about the inland port. Okay, council comments, number five on our agenda takes us to council comments. I feel like I've been starting a lot on this side, Councilwoman Beck. Have I been favoring this side?
Yeah.
So I should bring it back to this side?
Yeah.
Before I do, Councilwoman Beck will give us her council comments. You've noticed we're down a couple team members here tonight. Councilman Marshall is away on business, I believe, and Councilman Euler's away on pleasure. I mean, vacation, I think, is where he's at. So we wish him well. We'll catch him next time, but this is what we got tonight. So I'm sure they're watching wherever they're at.
I bet they aren't.
Councilwoman Beck.
Just one thing, I am overseeing the Yard of the Week, and I just want to extend my gratitude for everyone that is nominating homes or yards and just helping beautify our city. The applications, like in the very beginning, I bet we were getting 20 to 30 a week. Now we're down to two or three. So if you have a neighbor or you're taking a little bit of pride in your own yard, now is a great time to hop online. Just go to our website, put Yard of the Week in the search bar, and nominate yourself or your neighbor. Throw in some pictures. It's super helpful. It's been a fun activity. So we're gonna go through first or end of October. So you have some time, and that's all I have.
Don't be shy. Self-nominate, right?
Yeah, self-nominate. It's okay. Take pride in your yard.
If you've worked hard. Thanks for bringing that back, Councilwoman Beck. That's a cool thing. Rich already mentioned Marie Huff, but I know that was back in the Marie Huff days, Yard of the Week, and it's cool to get back to it, so. Councilman Carden?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things, and then one big thing. So first is we have a couple of events that are coming up to put on your calendar. The first is our Harvest Moon Hurrah, which is put on by our Arts Council on the 7th of September. It's a Saturday, just at the city park across the street. Some cool things that are happening, and I don't have all the details. We'll talk a little bit more about them next time, but right now they are doing open submissions for artwork that you would like to display at the Arts or at the Harvest Moon Festival. So any type of art that you can display, so paintings, those type of things. And then also, there's gonna be some different types of acts there this year. We really want to make it a big event, so put that on your calendar. It's on September 7th. The other event that's happening in September is our Wings and Wheels down at the airport, and if you haven't been to it, you are missing out. That'll be on a Saturday as well, and lots of things happening there. Tickets are on sale now on, is it SF City Ticks? Is that right? And then you can get your tickets there, plan your day. There'll be lots of cool airshow things, cars, some explosions, lots of STEM things for kids to do. It'll be a really cool event, so make sure you get that on your calendar. And lastly, I want to invite Heidi up to announce everybody and give everybody the proper introduction. Heidi is one of our adult advisors for our Youth City Council. It's one of the groups I get to work with, and tonight we have our officers, our Youth City Council officers here, and we're gonna do a swearing in. So Heidi, I'm gonna have you come up and just talk about them a little bit, and then introduce them all up here. I didn't tell you that you were gonna do that part, so.
All right, so we have about 63 members in our Youth City Council this year, and we have 10 officers who are right there. They're gorgeous. What do you want me to say, Jesse?
Just say, if you want to just introduce them and what their position is?
So first, we'll have Mark come up.
Or you can make Mark do it all.
This year, I can do it. It's fine. So Mark Chapman is our mayor this year. Our mayor pro tem is Clara Martin. Then we have, let's see, Harley Rowberry is our recorder. Libby Hancock is our historian. Gage Rowberry is our PIO. Who else do we have? Owen Young is our...
Public service.
Public service? No, no, public commission. Yeah, he's our commission officer. Then we have our Activities Committee, who the chair is Jasmine, and I'm not gonna say your last name because I'll butcher it. Okay. Oh, actually, I forgot one person. So our committee is Taylor Took and Mac Bramel. And then our service officer is McKinley Rice Kim. Is that right? So these are our officers, our executive board, so.
So Mayor, we're gonna ask you to do honorary swearing in of them. While Mayor's coming down there, I just want to just give maybe a shout out to this group. So one of the intentions of our Youth City Council is that they do a lot of services, plan a lot of things. So twice a month, this group gets together, or once a month, this group gets together and plans the meeting that they're gonna have, and then they do the meeting the next week. They also plan all the service activities, make sure that they have people assigned to everything. So thank you for what you do to our city. Rich talked about it at the first, but the people of Spanish Fork, the volunteers, this is what makes our city what it is. So thank you for what you're doing.
Give a round of applause before we do. Okay, so this is how we're gonna do this. You need to state your name at the first of this, and so we're gonna, we're gonna say aye, where everybody's gonna put their hand to the square, and then we're gonna say aye, your name, your name, your name, your name, all the way down, and then we'll finish the whole process, okay? In unison, it's not that hard, but you gotta just repeat after me. It's not hard. Okay, so here we go. Everybody raise your right hand. All right, here we go. Aye?
Aye.
Jasmine Casameta, Taylor Took.
Mac Bramel.
Mark Chapman.
Clara.
Gage Rowberry.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
...that I will support, obey, and defend...
That I will support, obey, and defend...
...the Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States...
...and the Constitution of the State of Utah...
And the Constitution of the State of Utah...
...and that I will discharge the duties of my office...
And I will discharge the duties of my office...
...with fidelity...
With fidelity.
Congratulations. And if you'll stand up here, we'll do a photo in front of the council as well. So come stand right here. They're centered on the logo. I need to stand behind the podium.
Wait, how come you're not doing the same poses as you were in that other picture?
Okay, ready?
If you'll let Jack get the official one.
One, two, three, right here. I'm done. Thank you.
Do you guys want to start with the chief and shake everybody's hand around here?
Is that NSF? Hold on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There you go. There you go. Especially when you can look like that up there.
And Mayor, that's all I have. That's all you got? That's some pretty good stuff. The Youth City Council, important piece of Spanish Fork, and coming up with the events that they certainly help with throughout the year, but also with the Utah League of Cities and Towns when they get to go up there and participate in the day of really researching real issues, the same issues that the state's working on, and so to get in that space early on. Proud of you kids for stepping up and being involved like you are. You're gonna get an education like you've not had before. So good, good, good job and good luck. Tyler, do you want to tell them anything about your ability as a driver up to, up to the League of Conference? This story lives in infamy.
Sure, yeah. So any of you that are on Youth City Council, there's a trip in the future, which you probably already know about, going up to the state capitol. And one year, I'll try and be quick with this, the city manager and myself were there, and I'd driven the senior van with all the Youth City Council up. So first off, the roads were super fun because I could pretty much do whatever I wanted and people didn't care. But the second thing that made it even more fun is we're sitting at lunch right before we have to take everybody back, and we're parked in a parking garage across the street from where we're eating lunch and realize that we don't have any cash and you have to pay to get out. I'd somehow forgotten my wallet, so I lean over to the city manager, Seth Perrins, and I said, Seth, can I borrow a couple bucks? He's like, I forgot my wallet. So the moral of the story is whenever you go with us up to, yeah, Salt Lake, bring some extra cash. I had to ask the Youth City Council to give some funds to me. I did return it later. So anyways, just bring some cash with you.
Perrins, send them with a little cash because we don't pay for parking. We reimburse for parking, but that was a great thing. No, congratulations. Way to go, Perrins, too, for supporting your kids, and it's gonna be a good thing for everybody. So way to go. Okay, Councilman Took.
All right, thanks, Mayor. So just to touch on this Youth City Council, I...
Was there a Took in there?
There's a Took in there.
Okay.
I couldn't be more proud. So decades ago, I fell in love with Spanish Fork when I served on Youth City Council, and so brought a tear to my eye tonight to see how you get sworn in and serving the city and getting to know better, and I hope some of you have the same experience that I had where I just fell in love with the city and how amazing it is and just helping make it great. And that's what we're doing, all of us. So thank you for, again, for serving. The only item I have tonight, as far as announcements go, is just, if you haven't yet, come out on Saturday morning and check out the farmer's market sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce. We went, I took my family last Saturday. I know Councilman Carden was there later on, and it was fantastic. So many amazing options of just different vegetables and fruits and so forth. I know we grabbed some Macmillan apples. I think their truck sold out. I don't know how fast, but it was, or excuse me, peaches. And delicious, they're ready to go a little earlier than most peach trees right now. Anyway, it's a wonderful ambiance down there. It's a fun event. It's, you need to go check it out, even if you don't buy anything, walking around and sampling, you know, different things is a lot of fun, and I know the Took's love it. So that's all I've got, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Took. The farmer's market in full swing, so pretty good stuff and good people down there making it happen. So thank you. Okay, I just have two things tonight that I want to touch on. The first one, I'll try to just get through pretty quick without emotions to it, but Spanish Fork lost a great resident a couple of days ago, and if you haven't heard of it, you will, and there's services coming up next week. But Carol Ford passed away suddenly while she was out of town with her family. And if you were lucky enough to know this woman in the community, you were certainly lucky. You were just lucky. The Ford family's done a lot for the city that they live in. They've done a lot for a lot of people, and it's, most of it's just unknown. So that woman and the Ford family have, I know, my utmost respect and the council, I think I speak for that as well, that the love there, as I'm trying to think of words to say, they're tough, they're tough to come by, but I know she loved her kids, she loved her family, she loved the community that we're all a part of and will miss her. Some statement that I found that I just came across as I was thinking more about her and their family last night was one that says, "We can't fully appreciate joyful reunions later without tearful separations now. The only way to take sorrow out of death is to take love out of life." And we're feeling a lot of sorrow for the loss that the community is experiencing with the Ford family there, but it's because they love life. We love her, and she was a great example of how to get love out of life and live it right. So we'll miss you, Carol, and we'll pay respects to her and the Ford family next week. Another couple pictures, I don't know if they're gonna work, Jack, or not, but I was able to speak to the Utah County Association of Realtors earlier today in a... in a summit that they had regarding housing. So talking about Spanish Fork, talking about Realtors and, and their relationship with, working with the cities that, that they serve, the communities that they serve, was able to be there and, and have my wife Amber come with me. And so after I present, they want a picture with my wife, not with me, go figure. But that's definitely because she's got, got the looks out of the group. And it's, it was fun to, to have her there and, and talk a little bit about Spanish Fork and a little bit about, about the state of, the overall state of, of Utah and our housing situations. I've got a couple of slides that I just want to share really quick that Jack, our PIO, helped me put together at the very last minute. We won't go through the video portions of it. But, but I love highlighting our city to, to people that maybe not be completely aware of, of what we do in, in Spanish Fork. Yeah, you can go to that next slide even further. Letting them know that your, your public servants here locally are certainly different. And I always remind people of this, but local service is certainly different than the politics that we're yelling out on television. As, I don't know if anybody knew, it's an election year this year. Does anybody know that? I don't know if you've seen that on television, but federal politics and career politicians certainly different than the local politics that, that you're here for a time and, and then you try to make decisions and, and you move, move on. I showed them a couple of clips of some funny meetings that we'd had to remind them that we're real people. You don't need to play that. Everybody's seen that in this, haven't they? Seth, you've seen that?
He lived it.
It's funny, he lived it. He was right there. Told them that, A, the regular day of, of, in the life of a local elected official is that you have malfunctions of equipment when you're trying to, to show pictures. But basically, it's, it's, it's that you have a beautiful day of golf, that I'm watching my son there play golf. And, and it's right after we installed the sprinkler system in the, in the golf course that saved hundreds of thousands, millions of gallons of water and, and thousands of dollars in, in pumping costs. And then the very same day, when you think it's going good, that's how it ends. And there's trucks in the side of, of, of homes. And so sometimes that's just how it, how it is when you think you got it figured out. The next slide there, some big things about Spanish Fork that I communicated to them. Things like the RAP tax that we collect, a, a small portion of sales tax in Spanish Fork. A bunch of other communities do it as well. But that's how you're paying for things like parks and, and arts and, and recreation, recreation centers, ball fields, things like that. In Spanish Fork, a lot of that is coming from the one-tenth of one percent that's collected as, as sale ta, sales tax in Spanish Fork. You can click through these, but basically I told them, hey, communicate with your elected officials. It doesn't necessarily need to be the heightened sense on social media where people post a lot of stuff that maybe they wouldn't dare ever say to someone's face or text them. But Jack, I don't know why he wanted to underline the sleazy mic portion of this, that I was, he, he really liked doing that. But that, that's what you sign up for in public office. Kids, you're not going to experience that with U City Council, all right? You're, you're, you're pretty calm stuff. But, but the internet, right? Like, like good old Abe Lincoln said, "The problem with the internet quotes is that you can't always depend on their accuracy." He said that in 1864. Did you believe that? You like, yeah. It's one of your favorite quotes of Abe Lincoln, right? We do need to disagree better in our, in our public discourse. Doesn't mean we need to, need less disagreement, we just need to be better about it. Realize that people come from different angles and different opinions and arrive at different conclusions because they've lived different lives and seen different things. And so let's be better about understanding that. Communication's key. This, this is an older logo of Spanish Fork, and there's our current logo of Spanish Fork. Seth and I remember, Stacy, you were here, when we, when we did the, the first one on the left, we had an outside group come in and say, "What do you think about Spanish Fork?" And they said, "Well, you're surrounded by beauty. You have the mountains on one side and a river going through your community, and then the lake on the other." And so really, it feels like Spanish Fork, you could surround yourself in Spanish Fork. And so we thought that was a pretty good, pretty good logo and pretty good tagline. And it was, and it served us well for a few years. But I will tell you, when you wore it on your chest, on a shirt, or on a, on the side of your shirt or something, there were certain times where people would come up and they wouldn't get the surround part. They'd just start with Spanish Fork. And they'd wonder and say, "Spanish Fork yourself? What does that mean?" And so, so my connection there is, you know what? Government is made up of people, local government is made up of people, flawed people that, we don't, we don't always get it completely right. We, we don't hit home runs all the time. We swing and hit a lot of singles. And singles add up to success like, like Rich Cope was talking about. Couple more slides that I'll just quickly touch on. As we, we have public hearings in Spanish Fork and, and in these meetings a lot. It's dealing with land use changes, zone changes, different things like that. This is a, a slide from our development department of permits in, in Spanish Fork for residential housing. You can see the red is single-family units, the gray is multifamily units. And you can see for the last three years at least, there's been more multifamily units approved in Spanish Fork than there has single-family units. That is part of the process of the state always talking to us about a housing crisis, a housing affordability crisis. It's not, it's not one size fits all for sure. And if you go in the multifamily unit areas of Spanish Fork, you'll see that, geez, you wonder if that's affordable. It's still, it's still half a million dollars to, to, to get in some of those units. But that's different than your single-family units for sure. Those are some of the decisions that we, that we talk most about in, in local elected office. And frankly, the, the most that we get emails about and correspondence about. That next slide, I showed them this. This is an area of town that used to be a, a cement batch plant way back in the day. Was an industrial use. And then a charter school was next to it, a church, and then an M Tech school on the other side, if I turned around and took that picture. But that, that's how it sat for years and years and years like that. When the, the, the landowner, the, the physical person that owns this land brought a proposal to Spanish Fork of, hey, I want to do something a little different here. I want to build some multifamily here. We went through the public process, the public hearing process, and that's what's there today. If I could replay, if I brought them up on my computer, on my phone, or on Facebook frankly, and showed you some of the messages of how terrible this would be for the city because it was a multifamily development. How terrible the, the vagrants would be, the crime. Even some saying the type of people that would live in, in that community if you allow it to be built. If you click to the next picture, you can zoom in here. The type of people that live in developments like this, those cops are not on a call in that development. They live in that development. And so do your teachers. And so does everyday working class members of this city. And that's, that is up and down the Wasense front. It, it's not unique to Spanish Fork. But if your city touches any part of I-15, you certainly do have a responsibility to have a diverse set of housing options. Not a one-size-fits-all, but, but places where different people at different stages of life can, can call their home. And so these last couple of slides simply allocate every year. And Seth is, is very, our city manager is very aware of, of this front of it because every year the legislature is in session, we're up there talking about housing affordability. And it's repeated every time that maybe cities are the big problem with housing affordability because we charge fees for new construction. The average new construction build for a single-family home in Spanish Fork right now is about $650,000 for a new single-family home. This is the fees that you would pay included in that, in that home to build in Spanish Fork. About three percent of the overall cost. Again, my question, when we're asked by the legislature, by different groups to waive those fees, or maybe how can you just make the fee zero so homes can be more affordable? Do you think for one second, if that $650,000 home, if we took those fees completely away and it was $625, that that home would sell for $625? The answer's no. It would sell for market price and whatever the market dictates is what it would sell for. Those fees are real fees. They're not inhibitive to building in Spanish Fork. Here's all the developments happening in Spanish Fork. It's north, south, east, and west of our city are approved developments and homes going under construction. And so again, that was my, in a nutshell, that was my speech to the Realtors today, representing Spanish Fork. It's certainly not part of the problem of housing. We're trying to be part of the solution. And so I see, you know, we do have a couple of items, I think, on, on, on the agenda tonight that's public hearings for housing. I think it's just a good reminder to keep that in our minds as we're, we're a community of 45,000. We used to be 20,000 and before that, we were 10,000. And it's always been people saying, hey, I'm here now, maybe, maybe let's not do any more housing. But that, that's not the case. We don't have the power to do that. We live in America. We live in the free market that, that property rights do matter. And, and so let's keep on factual basis when we're talking about development in our community. Because we can understand if somebody has a difference of opinion and let's talk about those differences. And let's just get to the best solution. That's what local government's all about. Sorry, guys, I went off on a soapbox a little bit about local government, but you're, you're on the local government. So there's my council comments for tonight. Thank you, Jack, for bringing those up. Appreciate it. If there's nothing else from the council, it takes us to staff reports, which has been a good addition to this part of the meeting too, to be able to update us from a couple of weeks ago from other meetings that have taken place.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. A couple of staff reports, we'll go to Deputy Chief Hoarding, Fire, Fire Deputy Chief. She'll speak about some major changes and how they're going in the fire department. Then we'll wrap around to Cory. Cory's going to have a little bit of fun, talk about some street changes. And then Jordan's going to talk about golf course and the year that the golf course had. And then I'll wrap up with some dispatch stuff. She's on.
Is that better? Okay. All right, so Spanish Fork Fire and EMS, we run about 10 calls a day on average. And of those 10 calls, three of them are usually fire-specific calls. So historically, for the last 116 years, those calls were taken care of by our volunteers. And they would drive from home or work and come to the fire station and pick up a truck and drive to the call, which on average takes about 6.8 minutes to get to that where they're actually en route to the call. In the last three weeks, we've been able to reduce that down to two minutes and 13 seconds. So we've been able to save almost five minutes of time to get to the calls a little bit faster. So it's been a lot of, a lot of change. Some of the calls that they've went on, they've went on 59 calls in the last three weeks. And nine of those have been out of the city. Everything else is all in Spanish Fork city limits. Let's see, so some of the calls that we went on this last week, you may have seen on our social media and, and on the city is, was the school bus accident versus the garbage truck. That was one of their first calls, actually. And then we also went on the fuel spill up the canyon where we had 6,000 gallons of fuel spill onto the, onto the, onto Highway 6. So we've actually been able to get there just a little bit faster and help our citizens, help the kids come in into our, our area and take care of them a little bit better. So this has been a huge increase to our service and we've been able to expand and, and speed up our service for our community. It's been amazing. Any questions?
I have a couple of comments. First of all, thank you to all the new hires in directing this big change. It's been coming for the last several years, so thank you. But also a big thank you to all of our volunteers throughout the decades, throughout the last century volunteering their time and talents and energy and, and sacrificing so much to work on that team. We, we wouldn't be where we are in Spanish Fork without their hours and hours of volunteer hours because they saved the city so much money to allow the city of Spanish Fork to do other things. So I think all of us, a heartfelt, our gratitude to them for doing that.
They're amazing people and they do such a good job. I always, it blew me away how fast they could get out the door to respond to calls. It was, it was unbelievable, so. And we've actually been able to hire some of those guys. So a lot of our part-time staff and a few volunteer guys have actually are now full-time with Spanish Fork now. It's pretty awesome.
Awesome. Thanks, Krista.
Maybe adding to that, Krista and Mayor and Council, through the years, the, the volunteer EMS, volunteer fire, they had a, a response time, they had to live within a certain geography of the station. It was about four-minute response time. And they're, and you heard Krista say, it was evolving into most recently about a six and a half or six-minute, 45-second response to the station. And then you get in the station and drive to the respective call, right? We transitioned EMS about 10, 11 years ago, and there have been a lot of evolutions for the EMS. But, but as, as time has changed and the community's grown, that response time, for a couple of reasons, had to get bigger. We just couldn't attract volunteers, you know, the ability for people to dedicate the kind of time necessary so that response time would get further and further away from the station. And that certain times of day, traffic in different areas might, might add to it. So this, this, we have done amazing things. And as, as you said, Councilwoman Beck, the, the volunteers and the history there on both the fire and EMS side of, of this service has benefited our community greatly. And, and as I look at cities across the, the state and compare costs and where they are today, we are, we, our costs are so much lower and we have benefited from, from that because we haven't had to pay as much because we've had such great volunteers that, that have done it for the love of what they do. And, and we still have a lot of them, as Krista said, but we're grateful for that history and likewise grateful for this added resource and, and the time. That time savings is significant. Five minutes is huge.
It's huge. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Chief Hoarding. Appreciate that. Who's next from staff? Cory?
I guess me. I, I didn't know if it would go down the line, but the end of last week, Seth sent out in his memo a picture similar to this with a question of what's missing, what two things are missing. I, I don't know that he got a lot of response back, but we figured we'd maybe put the, the Mayor and Council on the line a little bit and, and see how well you, you recognize this picture.
Stop sign in the light.
Yeah, so this is looking west on Center Street at 200 West. If you recall, there was a, wires hanging across the road with a, a blinking red light and a stop sign as big as your truck. Trying to help create safety in this intersection. And as, as always, summer break was coming to an end. School was beginning to start and there was a flurry of activity trying to get the roads ready. A lot of effort from our engineering team, as well as some contractors in our streets department. They were able to get the road paved, striped, signal installed, all in preparation for new entrances at the school. So it, we watched that. Dylan Muirbrook and our, our traffic engineer watched that all morning. As we change traffic patterns, we're always concerned about accidents. And fortunately, we, we can report that we didn't need an ambulance crew out or didn't see any accidents. There were message boards and just think they did a wonderful job in preparing for this, this change.
I gotta be honest, I pumped the brakes a couple of times. Felt a little weird, first times going through it, right?
Absolutely. I, I still do in several places in town.
Yeah, thought Chief was waiting in the weeds to just dare me to do it or something, but, yeah. Good work. Good stuff. Okay. Jordan?
All right. Golf course had a record year. And the golf course has done really well, especially since the pandemic hit. When the pandemic hit, the golf course is one place you could go and not be surrounded by people, so it was very popular. So that's definitely helped the course's operations. Another change that we made two or three years ago was that they were, seeing a lot of tee times go unused. People would call up, make a tee time, but then they wouldn't show up. So the golf course was out the revenue. And then four golfers that could have been golfing weren't golfing, right? So kind of a lose-lose situation. So now, the last couple of years, when you go to make a tee time, you actually have to pay at that point. I know the course is good about giving refunds if they get some notice, but that's really helped. I know the Course is good about giving refunds if they get some notice, but that's really helped make sure that, you know, those tee times are going used. Did a little history. Since two thousand, there have been two courses built in Utah Valley, Talons Cove and Sleepy Ridge. And one course was closed, Cascade Golf Course. So right now, I believe there's ten courses in Utah Valley. But the population has just about doubled since two thousand. So the courses, the course growth isn't keeping up with populations that were seeing demand for golf. Yeah. The Golf Course historically has been able to cover operations, but not so much the capital. So the last ten years, we've built the event center and we did a, an irrigation project that you referenced, Mayor. Yeah. So the profit that the Golf Course now is bringing in is going three places. One is savings for future projects. We have a capital project fund where we're taking money from the general fund, stocking it away for future improvements to the Course. Two, paying back a loan from the water fund that helped pay for the irrigation project. And then the general fund helped pay for part of that irrigation project and the event center. So we're able to take those profits and pay back the general fund for that as well. But yeah, Golf Course is doing better than ever. It's busy.
Can you share with the public the numbers that was shared in our Friday memo of how much up this year?
Yeah. Green fee revenues were up over three hundred thousand. Golf cart revenues were up over one hundred fifty thousand. Driving range revenues were up over twenty thousand. And sled hill revenue was up greater than ever.
Thanks, Jordan.
From zero.
From zero to something greater than that.
I think it's important, the, the part of the event center attachment to it, yeah, you can rent that out for weddings or functions. It's not always very conducive if golfers are trying to come and go as, as you're trying to hold a, hold an event there. It's, but it has made a difference in the corporate side of things, right? The tournaments that, that have been held there and, and now people have space to have their lunch.
One of those things about tournaments is it attracts a lot of golfers and they usually want a place that they can gather before or after the tournament. So that event center is very conducive to that.
We've, uh, we've teased Amber in these meetings about Target. I think that, you know, we should keep track of how many times Mayor is at the Golf Course and we keep track of that revenue.
We don't need to do that. No.
He might be there more than the pro.
Yeah. I should just start, yeah, getting paid part-time to be up there, maybe. Maybe give lessons, right, Craig? Give lessons there. Yeah. Lessons on how to get mad at a golf ball.
Nobody would take him.
Nobody would take him up. That's right. That's true. Sixteen, my seventeen-year-old doesn't take him. Tells me, you know.
My seventeen-year-old does.
Yeah. All right. Thank you, Jordan. Manager Parents.
Yeah, thank you. I also, I sit on the Central Utah 911 Dispatch Board. And we met last week and discussed a lot of, a lot of issues, policies. But one issue in particular that I thought I'd bring up here to you, Mayor and Council, is there is a, there's a state law, relatively new state law, that, that invites all dispatch centers to transfer less than two percent of calls. And if they meet that threshold, if they meet that threshold, then they'll be eligible for some state grants, state monies. It's kind of an incentive to decrease transfers from one 911 to another. You call 911, you go through the, the call-taking process and it might take, you know, a minute to, to get all the information and have that dispatched. Then for the, the dispatcher to say, oh, wait, you should be at a different place, transfer you right. It slows down that call. Makes perfect sense. The Central Utah 911 covers all of Utah County with the exception of Springville, Mapleton, Springville, Provo, and Orem, and all of Juab County. And our dispatch center covers seventy-seven miles of freeway, I-15, Point of the Mountain to the end of Juab County. In addition to that, all of the highways that go up into those canyons and out towards the sand dunes that are covered by Utah Highway Patrol. And our dispatch center then, we struggle meeting that requirement to not transfer calls because we have no ability to communicate with UHP. So when you call 911 on the freeway, right out here outside of Spanish Fork, the cell tower will route you to our dispatch center. Then we have to then, we cannot communicate with UHP, so we have to transfer that call. Because of that, we never will make that two percent threshold. Right now, we're at about twelve, the amount of calls that we transfer. So we're missing out on, as a dispatch agency, potentially four hundred thousand, five hundred thousand dollars. Even worse, because of that, Provo and Orem, who have combined into a metro, they call it Metro Dispatch, they are not eligible for those funds because it's dictated at a county level. If one dispatch center in the county doesn't meet that threshold, all dispatch centers are penalized. The reason for that is they want to, they, whoever they are, right, the legislature and, and others, they, they do want to consolidate dispatch. So we have fewer of these and, and covering greater areas. We've, we've consolidated significantly in Utah County. There are only three, uh, three dispatch agencies out of all of the different cities and towns and, and county that exist here. But this one issue really is a challenge for us. So I've reached out to some of our legislators and, and we're talking with other dispatch agencies to try to identify some solutions. But likely, this will include a legislative ask. So as we move a little bit further down the details of this and, and identify some solutions, there may be some, some conversations that are best, if you guys have, with some of those legislators in our area as well as, as outside of the area to, to have them help with this fix. We either need to be able to communicate with UHP better or for dispatch agencies that have that many miles of Highway Patrol give some kind of deference to getting that call to the right, to the right dispatch agency so they can dispatch their crews. It's only a half a million dollar question.
Thank you, Seth. Let's get that done. Susie Anderson was kind enough to take me on a, a tour a couple of weeks ago down there. And top-notch people that are working down there, right?
Some of the best.
Boy, I don't know. Is it open to the public? Could the public come get a tour at some point? Or was I just lucky?
Probably a little bit of luck. But if somebody wanted a tour, they could reach out. We probably could get my chief to walk them around or something.
Yeah. I'm telling you, just, just to see the, again, it's, it's the first responder mentality of those people down there and they go through intense training to be able to receive your call at the, the worst time that you need to call somebody and just be the calm side of that conversation and get help to you quick. And I was completely impressed and surprised at how well of a machine that is, that is run. So.
Yeah. It may be fascinating for the public to know. When, when we hire a new police officer, it probably takes about three months for them to go from the day we start them here to the day they're out on the road by themselves. Time spent shadowing another officer, then being shadowed by another officer and making sure that they know how to enforce the laws and, and do it the right way. Dispatchers are actually almost identical to that. I don't know exactly the timeframe, but it's, it's several months where they start learning policies, start practicing, start listening to calls and start taking calls and then are out on their own. They literally are using all of their hands and feet doing their job. They're clicking things. I mean, it's, they've got buttons that they're pushing with their feet and their hands. They've got seventeen, all right, I exaggerate, six screens, I think, going on. They have at least two phones, at least two different computers, three keyboards. It's like, it's a gamer's paradise. And so, yeah, it's a lot of work. And, and any of you are interested in a job, they are hiring.
Yeah, they are short people. They let me know that, that they need more people to take those calls. So. Thank you. Thank you, Seth, for that report. And thank you, everybody, for the staff reports and, and updates there to us and the public. Takes us to item seven on the agenda, consent items. There's items A, B, C, and D. Any questions from the council on any of those items?
Looks like we're going to table item B.
Okay. Settlement agreement with Rymac LLC is not ready for tonight. So I would entertain a motion to approve the consent items with tabling item B.
Can I put that in one motion?
Okay.
I move to approve our consent items A, C, and D and tabling item B.
Motion made by Councilman Carden.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Beck. Motion to approve the consent items. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Consent items are approved. Takes us to item eight of our agenda, items A through D of public hearing. The first one is the ordinance for the Villas at Annie's Acres Zone Change and Preliminary Platte. Mr. David Anderson?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Annie's Acres is a project that is about a third of the way built. And what's proposed tonight would allow for an altered design on the remaining part of Annie's Acres. Because of an ordinance change that the council approved a couple of years ago, in order to make what the applicants would like to have happen tonight a reality, the master plan development overlay needs to be approved. So that's the zone change part of what's before you. I'll go over some of the details of the proposed preliminary plat. And I'll just get this out of the way, right, to start with, both the Development Review Committee and Planning Commission have reviewed the proposal and have recommended that it be approved. In case anybody doesn't know what we're talking about, what we're showing in yellow there, that is actually the, the remaining undeveloped part of Annie's Acres. You can see on the, uh, the south side of it. These are the existing homes that have been built in Annie's Acres over the past few years. I want to mention that we as staff get very, very sensitive to the notion of having projects kind of change midstream, particularly when they're owner-occupied projects and people have maybe invested in a development with an expectation that it's gonna turn out a certain way based on things that had been previously approved. And that certainly has been the case here with us as staff. And I guess I'll cut to the chase with this as well. I'll finish up maybe with some details about what's proposed. I, I am a little bit relieved and couldn't be happier that, at least as I understand it, and I think I understand it well, that the existing residents of Annie's Acres by and large are pretty happy with what's proposed tonight. So it's certainly my inclination, I think many of us on the part of staff, to give those residents, who I think would probably by far be the most impacted, either for the better or worse, by any changes that would come about with, you know, new, new design being proposed or that sort of thing. We give them a lot of deference and, and, you know, certainly rely a lot on, on how they feel. But it's my understanding that, that there's a lot of support among those residents for what's proposed. This is the current zoning of the property, you know, sands the overlay. Subject property is zoned R-three. I'm sorry, subject property is zoned R-one-six. The River Run Town Homes adjacent to what we're talking about here with Annie's Acres, River Run here, that's zoned R-three, which allows for a little bit higher density. We're talking with some folks about developing some single-family subdivisions over here. Those also eventually would be zoned R-one-six, I believe. One has already been approved. So it's just kind of the lay of the land relative to zoning. Some aerial photographs of, of the site. This is looking to the north. I won't spend a lot of time on these. That's the existing built part of Annie's Acres. One thing that I think the applicants have done a good job of, again, it's the type of thing that we would be sensitive to as you look at making changes and wanting to make sure that the changes generally sync with some of the design aspects, you know, level of quality, maybe types of materials and different things like that that are already in place so that something doesn't have an extremely stark contrast between part A and part B. And I think the applicants have done a good job of, of taking that into consideration. Again, just a couple of other images of the, the subject property. This image specifically just shows what is being proposed for the currently vacant part of Annie's Acres. It's a combination of single-family homes, predominantly buildings with four homes attached. And one or so, I think it is just one, two-home structure with the project as well. The proposed amenities have been rearranged. Now a clubhouse would be located right over here. This is the River Run Town Homes development here. So in this case, north is to the left side of the image. And again, these are things that have been pretty thoroughly vetted with, with staff. And were discussed in some link with the Planning Commission recently. I'm happy to, to go further if you'd like, but just again, would mention that the Development Review Committee and Planning Commission have both recommended that the proposed change be approved. So this is the, the recommendation that we bring tonight that based on that finding that we have there and subject to those four conditions, that the proposed preliminary plat and zone change be approved.
Condition number four, Dave, that's the one that was talked about pretty heavily in Planning Commission. Has that already been addressed or is that just something we just need to keep in there to make sure that gets aligned?
Yeah, I think the fencing is a non-issue. I believe there is value in keeping some language there relative to the alignment of the road.
Okay. Cause it's the alignment of the road that's really, was, was a major concern by a couple of residents in Planning Commission.
That was raised. Incidentally, and I will be off to some degree, but just to provide some scale, I think we're talking about a pretty marginal difference one way or another in terms of how, for example, the center line of the road would, would be designed.
Gotcha.
Not, not talking about like adding some big additional sweeping curve or anything like that at all.
So it's pretty minor, but we just need to make sure it's there so that, to keep both parties available to get it fixed.
I think so. And this is specifically there at the request of our engineering departments. I think it.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions for Dave right now? Thank you, Dave. Before we go into public hearing, is there the applicant here that would like to speak to any of this?
Yes, sir.
Please give us your names so Terry can get it in the minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, my name's Dave Erickson. I'm with Leisure Villas. Got our team here if you have any questions. Dave did a good job explaining this and I'll be real brief. Basically what, this is a kind of an unusual situation. The goal of Leisure Villas over the last quarter century is to, is to build communities within a larger communities for a demographic which has, hadn't really been met surprisingly until a, a few developers started building senior fifty-five-plus restricted communities. We are actually the largest builder of fifty-five-plus restricted communities from, we have projects from North Logan to Springville. And we were approached when Annie's Acres hit a couple of speed bumps. And we're really excited to come in and finish this project out. Obviously, it's important that what we are, what we have proposed feels like it's coming from the same project, you know, same mother of what has already been developed in the community. And that's our intention. The thing that's, I would like to point out that I think makes us, that makes us, our projects, our community's work are basically three things. The homes have to be nice. They have to be big enough, comfortable for, for two folks, but be able to handle thirty people for a party. That's important. The other thing that's important people don't think about are that the CCNRs and the management and the, all, all of the HOA issues work efficiently and, and, and they're managed in such a way as to keep HOA fees as low as possible for folks that are on fixed incomes mostly. And we've learned all this over the years. But the thing that really sets us apart, I think, from other folks that do this kind of project is our large amenity package. We will be building what, what is different from, the main thing that was different from what was originally proposed years ago is that we will be bringing in a large clubhouse, swimming pool, theater, exercise facility. A large component of a successful senior community, and if you think about it, it makes sense, is the social connections that are made. There are a lot of widows that live in the, in our communities. A lot of single older folks and the ability to have social interactions is super important. And, and we sort of start that as we build the clubhouse and then the community takes ownership of that. And then they've really proven to be very successful over the years. So that's kind of what our intention is. We've had several rounds with DRC and the Planning Commission to get to a layout that we think is the most efficient and effective. And, you know, we're excited to get started. Any questions for me?
Clarify, so I don't remember the, what it was like three or so years ago. The biggest change you're saying is just the addition of a clubhouse?
Yes. Which we think is a good addition.
Right.
Yeah. Any other questions for Dave before we open it up for public hearing? Dave, I, I think it's a key, important point that you made there that I think can be reiterated, the, the quality and the construction. quality and the construction that are will be put in these homes and on the on the outside of these homes as well, the inside is not is not second to what's currently there, right? It's.
No, it has to fit. I mean, they will be slightly different, but we like our designs a little better. But as you're driving down the road, you you aren't planning to use the same basic color palettes that have been used so far. And I think basically we our intention is is to improve the landscaping as we proceed through that that's what's been put in so far. But it'll all feel as one coherent development. And then we will or we'll roll the existing Annie's Acres if the residents are still inclined, we'll roll that into a larger overall Villas at Annie's Acres project.
Thank you, Dave. Appreciate it. We'll call you back up if we have some other questions. Thank you. Okay, I'd entertain a motion to go into a public hearing for item A.
So moved?
Motion made by Councilwoman Beck.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Took. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
We're in public hearing for item A. Anybody that would like to come speak to this item, you're more than welcome. Make sure to get your name to Tara so she can get you in the minutes.
Hi, Diane Garcia. I am an adjacent property owner to this development. First, I would like to say that I was not noticed about the Planning Commission meeting, so I was not able to attend because no one told me about it. And I have a couple of things to say. First off, my farm is on the is currently now on the National Historic Register of Historic Places, and I am determined to preserve that history as well as the fireflies that all of you know about. So I have had some of the residents that are currently in Annie's Acres come out for Firefly tours, and they are awesome. And I want to thank the city for the dark sky streetlights, because when you're out there, you can't even tell there's a development there. So it's that's super awesome. I do like this new design in some ways. One, it doesn't have all the driveways coming out onto Bradford Lane like it did before. It has all those four plexus, so there is no front yard coming out on the area by my property. So I do appreciate that. I have something to bring up, and I brought this up when we were talking about the condos that are north of this, the drainage. So if you want to pull up a picture, I can tell you because we already have a current problem. So there is 80-plus-year-old clay drainage pipes that go throughout my fields. They also go through Cobalt Developments Fields, Jamie Powers, and Mylene Hales. Those springs, there's springs all throughout there, they run 24 hours a day, 365 days out of the year. In the past two weeks, the drainage ditch has backed up, and my pipes are no longer draining water off my fields. In a couple of months, we will have a big lake out there, and I will have damage done. So this drainage goes right through this Annie's Acres. So we need to be extremely mindful, and we need to get this fixed. I've already had the city out, so I've been communicating. But something that I warned about, we have springs like crazy out there. And when you cut off one area, the water finds another way. And so we need to make sure that that we're not going to have Lake Thompson out there, because it'll 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 be eventually my property, and then it's just going to keep growing because the water never stops. Okay, there's natural springs. I also like the fact that it's going to have the pathway and the iron fence, even though I had originally wanted a solid masonry fence like all the other developments. But as long as we get some trees planted along there so that my trees and those trees will help block the light and keep those fireflies going. So, thank you.
Thank you, Diane.
My name is Paula Daniels, and I spoke at the last meeting, but I'm kind of here for the group. I lived in Holliday for 31 years, and the property value there went sky high, and I decided to retire. And so, look, selling our home at a high value for a 65-year-old home there was crazy. But when we turned around and started looking for a single-family, one-level home, there was nothing in the valley to buy, even even at the price that we we got. So we started looking from Ogden to Twilla to Richfield, and nobody builds single level. Everybody has to have a basement. So we happened to come across Annie's Acres, and we waited on it. We got on a waiting list for a lot, and we were lucky to get one. And it was single-family, no basement. And so it's a pleasure to live there and know that, you know, we can stay there the rest of our life. It's single-family. It's it's one level. It's easy to get around. There's very few steps. The only thing that is probably adverse to us is there's so much rock that if you want to cross it, you know, in an emergency or whatever, it kills you. It kills your feet because I kind of run after a cat once in a while. And so that's the only thing that we've come across that's, you know, kind of a negative. But other than that, it's a great place to live, great community. People are really nice. We're we're all different, you know, religions, whatever values, everything is, you know, we're different. But everybody gets along, and it's really nice. So I appreciate that and hope this gets moving along. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. Appreciate it.
Hi, my name is Richard Miller. I also spoke at the Planning Commission meeting. We bought our property in Annie's Acres at the beginning of 2021, and thanks to the pandemic, didn't move in until December. But we're thrilled with our home there. We had a similar experience in trying to find a plus 55 community that was on one level without a basement. I call it our die-in home. We could live there until we die. And because it the entry is and exit is easy, and that suits us ideally, there's a great sense of community there. As Paula has said, people get along. There's a lot of just a lot of support for one another in that area. And I think that's part of what you get with a plus 55 community, as the gentleman from Leisure Villas indicated. That's certainly been the our case. The current residents have been disappointed in a couple of things. One, that the project has stalled. You know, our initial part got done, and then it just seemed to stall. And I won't spend time explaining why, because I know some of the reasons why. But we're all, I think I speak for 99% of the residents there. This is a big group from Annie's Acres, and we're all friends. We had a meeting in on the 25th of March, and it was to discuss this Leisure Villa proposal and allowing someone else to get the project finished. And as the information was presented about how it would be done, we all and the benefits that would come to to us from that, we've had two problems. One, that the project stalled, and the other is that our HOA under the current developer has not been well-run. So we don't have a sufficient reserve like we should have. And we're excited about being merged with the HOA capability that Leisure Villas brings. They know what they're doing. They've done this in various other communities. It spreads the cross the cost across a larger number of residents, which makes sense. We'll get the clubhouse, which will have some advantages for a number of our residents. So at that meeting, we had 30-some people or residences represented, and all but one voted in favor of this. We just took an informal vote of this moving forward. And the person who did not wasn't in favor of it, wasn't against it, he just said he wanted more information. So hopefully, I'm representing the group and saying that the existing residents of Annie's Acres are very excited to see this get done, and we hope that you approve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Appreciate that.
Hi, again. I just have a couple of questions. I'm here on behalf of the Vincents.
Give her your name for the television.
I'm Jackie Larson. Why haven't I gave a different name?
Jackie, hold the microphone down to your mouth.
Is that better?
I try to say better.
Yeah, just lean in a little.
Good, okay. I just wanted to point out that equipment was brought in exactly a week ago, and they already started moving ground out here. I don't, maybe they still were able to due to the past zoning, but I just thought that they shouldn't be doing that until they get your approval. A bunch of the plans show that the corners kind of like cut off where River Bottoms Road and Bradford Lanes meet. If you go back to previous documents, though, there's a roundabout in that area. So is that part of this? Is it? Why did it disappear? What are the access points going to be to those roads? And what's going to change with River Bottoms Road and Bradford Lane? Last question with water is, was this property delineated? That's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jackie.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Vicki Bradford, owner of Annie's Acres. First of all, I want to address the equipment that has been brought in onto our property as as Arby Construction. So that would be my family's business. So we have decided to try and clean up the area and get all of our stuff off of there for leisure, improve the construction roads for them so they can get in in on there. So it isn't leisure that has brought that into there. So we are very aware also of the water problem, the groundwater and the springs, and are working on that. Hopefully, hopefully, when all of the property, not just ours, but to the north of us, is developed, that the water will go into all the storm drains we build anyway, that we can help solve that problem that way. Might have to have more work on that. I'm not I'm not sure about that. And as far as the fence, the wrought iron fence, instead of having the six-foot concrete there, the reason we wanted to have the wrought iron fence is because it's more durable, it's stronger even than the than the concrete that can break apart in panels. So we had an accident there a few weeks ago that really did take out a big chunk of that really strong fence. And the police officer that was there told me that if it wasn't for that fence, they would that the truck with two 16-year-old girls in it would have gone through the home, that it stopped just short of of hitting. He said it doesn't matter what other fence was there, it would have gone through it, you know, unless it was something that strong as that. So that's why we built that fence. So over the last several decades, there's been a lot of people go through that fence. But my dad had a great big deep ditch right there. So they didn't go into the field, but there was a lot of injuries and a lot of, you know, broken vehicles from that. So anyway, that's why we wanted that fence. And I'm really glad that the city, I didn't even think about it, but that they required that to go around and down Bradford Lane, although it won't block the light as well. I think safety-wise, it's it's a better choice. Since this is the last time, I think that I will be here. I hope. I'm sure I'm I'm sure that the staff here is so sick of me. We're beyond first-name basis here. Anyway, I am so thrilled with Leisure Villas. They have been more than accommodating to to us and to everything that we want. And especially, they wanted to make sure that all of the residents there agreed. Is that my timer?
Yeah, but yeah, I probably should have invited you up with the applicant as the landowner here. You can have some time.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I would have anyway. Because this is my last time.
All right, okay.
Anyway, okay, so thank you very much for that.
Yeah.
Anyway, they have been so good to accommodate us, to bring up their design to match ours. You know, they had, and they already had a really great product, but we do want it to to really blend, and they've been so good about that. And in every way, they have been. And I really appreciate that. And I appreciate the city. I can't even tell you how how much I appreciate the staff here. It's been really, really wonderful working with them. COVID held us up, and then you all know about the lawsuit with Toupey. So I was getting through that property, took two years for volunteer to get through that property. And Vaughn can explain all that to you if you want to know more. Anyway, so that was the main holdup with that. And anyway, I'm just glad it's to the point that that it is, and that hopefully tonight, well, we won't be done, but we'll be done, you know, with the city part of it. So just in honor of my ancestors, I want to say that John Holt left Tennessee in 1951 or 1851 to come to Spanish Fork. He got to winter quarters, and it was late in the year, so he left his family and came on alone. And he homesteaded the property in River Bottoms. And it was a really quite a big piece of property. Diane Garcia's great-grandmother and my great-grandmother are sisters, so that was it. It was a large area. Unfortunately, he passed away before his family got here. So his oldest son, who was just a teenager, 16, 17-year-old, I don't know how old he was exactly, but Jesse Peyton Holt brought his mother and siblings on, and they went to the homestead. They dug a hole into the mountain there. They called that Gopher Town out there. There were so many dugouts in the side of the hill, and they lived there until they could build the existing home that is still there. It's condemned and will be taken down, but as of today, it's it's still there. Anyway, so that that 172 years ago, this property has been in our family, and I'm really proud to be a part of it. You know, it's come down through a lot of a lot of different people. There's been a lot of relatives that have owned different pieces of it. But the the piece now that is the 30 acres of Annie's Acres, 15 acres of it has been directly come come down to right to my dad and then to me. And the other part was one of my dad's cousins that sold when he passed away. Anyway, so I think I'll be probably be the last of our family that lives there. And I think it happens to to every development and every farm, I think, across the country. Sooner or later, it's going to become too expensive for one person to to own it and run it. And so it gets diversified into different things. And this is what ours became was Annie's Acres. And it's been my a dream, my brother's dream, to make this into a 55-plus community that I didn't even know that existed 15 years ago. When he brought it up to me, we started it 10 years ago, and I had no idea what there, even though I've been in the construction business my entire life, I had no idea what developers went through to get to this, you know, to the point of having a finished product. Anyway, I will be really happy to be not be part of the HOA and have a new HOA management company also, and as I'm sure the rest of the residents will be will be too. Anyway, they Leisure has it down pat with the seniors. And I just want to say one comment. The first time I talked to Dave Erickson about this, he asked me if we planned to have a playground. And I said, no, we we don't, not for little kids. We don't. Because of the neighbors to the west, they those little kids visit us quite often, as it is, and we don't have anything for them to to really play with. And he said, well, that's a that's a really good thing, because we found out that grandmothers love their own grandkids and hate everybody else's. But, you know, it was a joke, not true, but kind of true. Anyway, so thank you for all you have done for us. I really appreciate it. The people that live in Annie's Acres are second to none. I I I'm just shocked at how just how they are, how neighborly they are. They take care of each other. They they go places together. They, you know, they just really are a community already, and they are so diversified. They're very And they are so diversified. They're very, very different from each other. And yet they all get along and, and do things. And when I am completely out of the HOA, I'm going to come out and be part of the community too. So anyway, thank you for everything.
Thank you Vicki.
Thank you.
I might be moving down there in two years. Sounds like a fun group, yeah.
Better watch out, they look like.
I'll make it.
I'll be quick. Benjamin Sanders.
Yes.
My wife and I moved in there a couple of years ago. And people say, where'd you move? And I say, the model home. And they said, oh, beautiful home, rocks. Lots and lots of rocks, because it's all landscaped with rocks. I just would like Leisure Villa to address something that is unclear to me. As I looked in their proposed CCNRs, it talks about non-conforming landscaping. And so my concern is, I don't know what that means, because if I have to conform to their landscaping, and by the way, I am for this, by the, so I'm not trying to subvert anything. But I do have a concern that it would cost me ten to fifteen thousand dollars to conform to different landscaping. So I would just like them to address what that means and how it affects the current residents there, because he already talked about how the landscaping is not up to their standards. So that's all.
Thank you Benjamin.
Real quickly, we like landscaping. We think landscaping, we don't like big seas of grass that our residents don't use, but they have to pay to mow. So our intentions are always do nice landscaping on the entrances, the corners, where it, where it visually makes a difference. So that's kind of our, our philosophy. With respect to this situation particularly, and what has happened with the drought we went through, all, all of the cities that I'm aware of are dealing with a transition right now between what we're all used to for the last hundred years and a new, less water intensive style of landscaping. That's just going to be the future, no matter what municipality we're in, I think. So we're, and in this particular case, we have existing landscaping that's there. And we are also required to comply with the ordinances that the city's adopted, which follow the new lower water intensive designs. So that's the pickle for it. So we are going to do as nice a landscaping as we are permitted to do going forward. We have to, per your ordinance, do rock mulch or bark in the park strips. There's no grass allowed anymore in park strips. So we'll, we want to do a different style of rock. I have the same issue that one lady brought up with walking on these big rocks. As you get older, I didn't realize I was so old until I, she started recently. It's hard to rock on rocks. So personally, I want to go to a smaller diameter rock in the park strips. And we will not be doing rock beds, rock flower. We will be transitioning to more bark beds in most locations. There will be a combination of bark and rock in the park strips. But it's an issue that we're, we're concerned about where we needed to tie in with, with what's there. And we need to transition to what we believe is a, a better style with more green in the, in the area. It's not grass. I don't know if that answered the question.
I think his question though, is that you're not going to make them make any changes on their dollar, right? Is that correct?
No. We're, our plan is not to rip up what was already done. Our plan is to transition from what has been done to a slightly, a different style, particularly around the houses.
And the current residents will not have to do anything to make changes to their yards?
Not unless the current residents in the existing HOA decide collectively that they want to. Or, or, but if, even if that happens, we'd like to be involved to make sure that they tie it together as we go forward.
Thank you Dave. Appreciate that. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Bill Hoofler. I live in Annie's Acres. We've been there since December twenty-one. And I just want to bring Vicki back up here a second.
Hey, that was her last time ever up there.
We'll allow it.
You'll allow it, thank you. She's been a wonderful neighbor. She lives in our community. She backs us a hundred percent. She loves us, we love her. And I think this community wouldn't be here if it weren't for this fantastic woman and all that she's done.
Anyone else? Singing, yes, yes sir.
I'm glad we're addressing this issue with rocks. I cannot get from the back of my house to the front of the house unless I walk through the house. Even if some of those rocks were removed to have some type of a, hold on, sod, wood chips, something would take away some of that. And so it's something to be looked at. HOA fees are going to go up. Right now, we pay a hundred dollars a month. When this new transition comes in, it's going to be close to a hundred and ninety, maybe two hundred dollars. If I had to pay an extra fifteen or twenty dollars a month over a period of time, we could get rid of some of those rocks. While all that construction work's taking place, to me, it seems like a natural time to correct some of those issues. That, I'm concerned about traffic patterns. Two weeks ago, maybe three weeks ago, I stood here and made a fool of myself, making a comparison with where I previously lived. And Spanish Fork City, I'm very impressed with. They've done a good job. I'm happy with it. I'm happy where I'm at. I'm happy where I'm at in my life. I just want to enjoy not having rocks to walk on.
Tell us your name.
Oh Keith Sumption.
Keith, thank you Keith.
I didn't sign the list that went around because we need to pick it up.
That's all right.
Would it be possible to get a copy of that proposal map? So the rest of us can look and see where those quads are going to go in, where the traffic pattern is. And on the north end of that volunteer road goes in and makes a left, they've already constructed mostly access onto the River Bottoms Road. That whole River Bottoms Road needs to be fixed. Pretty narrow, pretty tough. Thank you.
Thank you Keith. Anyone else? Okay, singing none, entertaining motion, go out of public hearing?
Still moved.
Motion made by Councilman Carden. Seconded by Councilman Took. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Okay, we're out of public hearing on item A. Discussion back up here. Any questions that the council has for, for Dave or staff? Any of the proposals?
There's just a few questions that maybe we can address. The one, the first comes to mind is the drainage problem, right? I know that the city's been talking with the Garcias and Diane. But where, where are we at with that? What are we, what do we expect, I guess, as the project moves forward? I don't know if I'm, who I'm looking to. I'm kind of looking between you two, because I don't, I'm assuming one of you is going to answer that.
Maybe between the two of us. I'm, I'm getting up to speed. I'm not quite familiar yet, so I can investigate and get back. I don't know if Dave has better input than that.
We wouldn't expect there to be any problem.
Okay, so it would have to be addressed?
Well, it's my understanding that it's been addressed. I think if it hadn't been addressed, staff would not be at the point of recommending that it be approved at this point.
Right.
And I don't know if the applicant has any engineering insight that they can share that, that might be helpful. But they're indeed the folks that, that designed the plan, that are staff reviews. And either finds to be consistent with their standards and best practices and that type of thing or not, so.
Hi, my name is Parker Johnson. I'm with Mustang Design. I'm the engineering designer for this project. And we've been working with Byron and staff for the drainage issues. Here, we're aware of the ditches that run adjacent and nearby the property. And we've been through with him where they're going, where they come from and how, when, at what times they fill up. And, and the best way to reroute those ditches so that, you know, we, we definitely don't want any flooding to occur. So we're working with staff to make sure that's taken care of.
Thank you Parker. Any other questions for Parker?
No.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
I guess my question would be, is it the city's responsibility? If Garcia's property did start flooding, like she said, what if there was a lake there one day? Is that?
No, I think it depends on what the cause is, right?
Right.
If, it's probably between property owners, you know, it's, it's a private issue.
It's a private issue, okay.
Yeah, they, Dave's right though, in terms of, the expectation is that they'll solve it. And I think it's a good, good comment by Parker to, to recognize that they see the issue and that they're working on it. And they shouldn't stop until they have it fixed.
Okay, any other questions?
I was going to say, the only, the big question was rocks and we've got nothing to do with that here. But I think your HOA is listening, so. And, and in large part, you are going to be that HOA, so look at yourselves, fix it, throw the rocks away. Okay, don't really do that, but.
Just move them.
But move them on whoever likes big rocks. But yeah, I, I love that that's one of the biggest problems they have with their development is the rocks. That's a sign of fantastic, so that's great.
I think, just my final question is that Diane did not get a public hearing notice? For planning? Should she have been notified on this? So maybe she's a little further away than that?
Yeah, she's right across the street.
Yeah.
So I mean, she should have, we can look at the records of what we did.
And then there was one other question that was brought up about the traffic changes. I know that we've talked about that road and some potential changes on that roundabout. What's happening there? Can somebody talk to that?
Okay, Courtney, we're just talking about that. Up until very recently, and I would kind of call it maybe offsite of this project where, where Volunteer Drive will intersect with River Bottoms Road. Perhaps in connection with the project that's adjacent to this one, the, the River Run Project, I think we, we've taken a step to move away from the idea that there would be a roundabout there. And instead of planning on some other way to have traffic control in place at that intersection, I think we're still planning on a roundabout at Bradford Lane and South Lane. I haven't heard otherwise there, but I'm aware of that, that other change to the north.
Okay. And then one other comment I just want to make from all of this is, and Diane had mentioned this, but just if you go to Annie's Acres, those dark lights are awesome. I love that that development's that way. I love that we're continuing that in that area. I'm sure that the residents like it because it's not blinding in their windows. It's not that bright. And it, it does preserve that River Bottoms area that we all love too. And so I, I appreciate, you know, as we move forward, as we continue that through the project and, you know, try to keep that light pollution down. So just want to make that comment.
I just have one comment as well. No questions, but so I grew up right above Annie, Annie's Acres on Scenic Drive here in Spanish Fork. And I, I remember for decades wondering what would go, you know, down below? What, what would go well? What would fit well in, in Spanish Fork and that land now where Annie's Acres is? And I, I just wanted to say, I couldn't be happier with, with what has been done. And it's a senior living community. I think it fits such a need that we have. And it's just so well done. It's beautiful. And I love what's happening, the growth as we're working through all these little, you know, tweaks and modifications to make it even more amazing. And so I just want to thank all of you for coming tonight and, and your support and for, you know, just being good, good citizens of Spanish Fork and, and a wonderful new community.
Mayor, I lied. One more comment.
Yes?
Mr. Sumption, the, the plans that we've shown are available on the website right now. But the city, if you want to come by, I think could print them for you if you needed to, right? The plans that.
Sure, yeah, you can just get them.
You, you can get a copy. To answer your question, you can have a copy.
You can get them online right now. If you, our, our agenda, they're available to anybody right now on our Agenda's website. So the city's.
So Spanish Fork.org, you can click it and you can get it.
I'm sorry, what?
Oh, grainy?
We can, we can publish a better one with the agenda.
And that's all I had, sorry.
No, don't be sorry. Great questions. Uh, yeah, I appreciate the touching on the traffic patterns here. This is part of, I think, what Vicki touched on about this development being installed and not going to the north to get, gets you all to a, a better road. You're, you're living in a development that the develop, the roads get developed when your development happens and not much further than that. And then you're dealing with bordering on county, county properties as well. So, so you're driving on some county roads to get to different places as well. And so those, those are farm roads that have been that tight for a long time. And, and those changes happen over time. But, but I do see this development, especially as it gets to the north and gets completed, that that's a, certainly the best route out for everyone in this subdivision is to be able to get to Volunteer Drive, get to a light. That other road is, is pretty tight and, and a lot of traffic on Main Street that I blame Stacy for. Because she's good at taking blame. But, but this will get you a lot of, a lot safer, this development being done, those roads being completed that we planned on for a long time, being completed. And now they're going to be completed. So at least part of your life will get a little bit better. Traffic wise, getting, getting safer out to Main Street for sure, so. And then time it when you want to take the leisurely drive through the River Bottoms. As long as people aren't coming off the east bench there, it's, it's a nice, a nice drive too, a nice slow drive. Yes, sir. Okay, no throwing rocks. Yep, we're not going to allow that.
At anybody. I said throw them away. I do not condone throwing rocks at people.
Well, it's under construction.
Smart, smart. I'd take it to the guest listens. I, I, did I say that?
Yeah, it could end up at the guest listens.
I would not do that. I would never do that. I love that that's the big challenge. I think that's fantastic.
Yeah, yeah. And I think that's a great idea. Again, your HOA, like, like Seth mentioned, you're, you're under construction. You're going to be under construction, some dust and things moving for a while by your houses. Maybe that's the, that's the time where you say, hey, can we do a couple of changes here? A couple of bigger pavers in between our rocks or something that can get us walking places a, a little bit, a little bit easier. I'm lucky enough to, to visit, to visit folks, good folks down there every Sunday and they feed me and it's great. And, and you, you, you have a beautiful, you have a beautiful area down there. So I'm, I'm happy for this improvement as well. There's no other questions. I would entertain a motion.
Do we have to list out all those findings, conditions?
Oh, you can say in the staff report.
Okay, okay, I got it then. I move to approve the ordinance for the villas at, or yeah, the villas at Annie's Acres Zone Change, Annie's Acres Zone Change and preliminary plat based on the listed findings and subject to the conditions listed in the staff report. Does that work Vaughn?
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Carden, seconded by Councilwoman Beck. A roll call vote here. Councilman Took.
Yes.
Councilman Carden.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Item A is approved and passed and let's get going.
Hey Mayor. Before, maybe at the risk of, at the risk of embarrassing Vicki just a little bit more, you've been a joy working with. We, we don't, I don't interact with Vicki a whole lot. I'll see her every once in a while, mostly in a DRC meeting. Every once in a while, she'll see me in the hallways of, of the city offices. But she is truly one of the kindest people that you can interact with. But maybe the kindest person you can interact with in development. Like, you don't come that way across developers all the time. And Vicki's just, she's just fantastic. So if you have more development to do, we'd love for you to do it. We would love for you to do more, just because you're great to work with. So thank you. I'll take them. I'll take them. I live over by Sierra Bonita Park. One thirty south, something like that. One thirty north. I'm just kidding.
I, I'll tell you a quick story about the, and now it's years ago, but Vicki, when you first came and started talking about this and it was, I guess, social media and, and discussing things on social media was still, was still relatively new. Because we're talking seven, eight years ago now, things. And, and I remember talking to you at some point and looking at, at some page or something and it said Spanish Fork on it, right? And I remember you saying, I remember telling you this.
Yeah, I remember, oh yeah.
Because, because from your first glance at it, it looked like it might be.
Our page.
Our page, the city's page, and so, I've had the, had the, uh, I had that discussion with you, but with other people at the same time, too. Hey, just because it says Spanish Fork, that's the, that's the social media way now. You could put Spanish Fork and then anything after that, but it's not the city's page, and, and there were things said about you that I, I'm sure that person didn't know, Vicky didn't know, the Bradfords didn't know what we all know and saw here tonight, but, but terrible things that, uh, just uncalled for, and, and, um, and so, I was glad to clear that up, but again, this should be a lesson to our community that, my goodness, uh, let, let's figure out facts, let's separate a motion from some of the, the discussions we need to have about development and about improvements and about changes that happen, and, uh, and just be better neighbors to each other, and, and you guys are a great example down there as a whole, and, and you are as well, Vicky, so, good work, and thank you. Appreciate your...
Thanks, Vicky.
Whoa.
Jeez, I didn't know that.
Crumble.
Well, Councilman...
We're gonna, we're gonna talk about crumble right now.
Councilman Took, uh, Councilman Took did have his phone go off during the thing, so any meeting you guys come back to, he's providing, uh, for everybody, so donuts, something like that.
That's for everyone.
Yep, that's the rule.
Thank you. Two more years, I'll be there.
It'll be...
You guys look like a fun party.
It'll be 20 years, she's only 29.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, guys. All right. Okay, anybody need a break before you go to item B? Okay, we're trooping along.
Night is young.
Item B, the ordinance for the Butterfield Zone Change. Mr. David Anderson.
Crumble.
Oh, it's Butterfield next.
Oh, is, am I, am I out of order on my thing?
Yeah, on ours, we have B, Butterfield, and then C, Pacific Horizon, and B, Crumble.
Just hang out.
We'll get to crumble. We'll be there.
Should've brought cookies.
You should've brought cookies.
We're not above a bribe. You could've brought some cookies.
We are above a bribe. I'm just gonna clarify.
We are, I'm sorry.
We don't throw rocks at people, and we are above a bribe.
Just made Vaughn choke on his coke over there.
Oof, Vaughn and I are dying.
This is it. Butterfield Zone Change. This proposal involves the city council approving the, the infill overlay, so that an applicant, the applicant potentially could construct a three-home structure on the property there, located on the corner of 6th East and 5th North. Um, this is the underlying zoning of the subject property, R16. Uh, did I get that right? I did. R16. And, incidentally, I don't have an image that shows the general plan, but this came up in the planning commission meeting, and it certainly has influenced staff's recommendation, which is to approve the proposed use of the infill overlay, so that a, a three-plex could be built on the subject property. Everything on the south side of 5th North on the general plan is designated medium-density residential. Everything on the north side is designated high-density residential. And in fact, um, this is an image taken from the intersection. 6th East is on the right there. 5th North is the street that's on the bottom of the image here, so looking north, and you, you can see what the composition of the block is there to the north. Uh, several four-plexes, um, housing types that I think were, were, popular to see built in the area, probably in the 70s, maybe into the early 80s and that type of a thing, um, which I'm simply sharing that kind of a way of to offer a little bit more background as to how staff's come to make the recommendation that we've made. Got a few other images here. Um, so this is looking across the other way, looking, uh, to the south, across 500 East, which, incidentally, I also wanna mention, um, and I've given quite a bit of thought to this since, um, one resident that lives on the other side of 5th East, uh, expressed concern about the proposed design in the planning commission meeting, and, you know, honestly, I have to acknowledge that I think they, they make a good point, which is that if you were to drive along 500 North, you know, it is lined with single-family detached homes. Um, so there are two different perspectives, clearly, as to, you know, what might be the most appropriate fit for the subject property on one hand, what's proposed here. Um, it's very easy for me to say with all confidence and, um, just understanding of our ordinance and different things like that, that it's consistent with the general plan, it's consistent with other similar types of projects that have been approved. Um, architecture is a little bit different, we'll look at that in just a second. Um, and yet, the infill overlay was created to allow people to, to utilize either vacant or underutilized properties, um, to create new opportunities for, um, uh, for housing, and really, this part of the community, uh, which I think is something that syncs up very, very well with what's being proposed here, so, again, different, different ways to look at the proposal. Um, just a couple of other images there. Uh, this plan identifies, uh, just kind of the layout of the project, so again, 500 North is on the south side here, see it north to the, to the, um, upper side of the image, as it should be. This is 600 East here, so the building that we'll look at in a second, it would face 600 East. Uh, we'll look at the site elevation here that would face 500 North. Parking will be, um, behind the dwellings, or at least on the opposite side of the front door, of the, front doors, rather, of the, of the homes here. And that's what's proposed by way of, um, of the residential building. I believe there have been some changes made from what was initially submitted. One had to do with adding, uh, this particular element here. This is the facade that would be visible from 5th North. Um, so, that was added in an effort to...
That Hardy board?
Pardon me?
Is that Hardy board that we're seeing?
I believe it is, uh, kind of like a board and batten type, but it's a masonry-based, I believe, um, type of cladding. Um, something to make this just not as stark of a wall as it would be with the windows and no other, no other element there. Um, and again, I'll mention this, I'll mention this from this perspective. I really like this architectural style. Uh, it's kind of new and kind of fresh, and yet, if you were to drive down the street, I think after it's built, it would stand out to some degree. On some people's minds, it's not a good thing, other people might appreciate it, so certainly, we're talking about some things that are somewhat subjective. Um, and, in a nutshell, that is the proposal. Build that building on the site as proposed, you know, in terms of the number of homes that somebody would be allowed to fit on a quarter acre property, you know, three, uh, syncs up very well with the general plan designation. Um, approving this, if the council decides to do so, would be consistent with other things that have happened. Uh, as proposed, the project does meet the standards that would come into play with an infill overlay project. I mentioned, you know, the DRC, at least I think I did, that the DRC has recommended that this be approved, the planning commission did as well. Um, and yet, I also acknowledge that there are different perspectives, um, about, um, you know, maybe how the project would impact the neighborhood, so.
Thank you, Dave. Any questions for Dave before we hear from anybody else? Thank you. The applicant here? Yeah, would you like to speak before we go into public hearing?
Uh, my name is Taylor Butterfield, and, yeah, I'm the owner and builder for the triplex, and, uh, we do have a property just up the street from this one. We take care of it really well, and we like nice properties, and so we do wanna make it something that looks nice and stays nice permanently. Um, so, yeah, we're just looking forward to start if that is approved and get it going as soon as we can.
Perfect. Thank you, Taylor. I'd entertain a motion to go to public hearing.
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Carden.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Took. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
We're in public hearing for item B. Anybody from the public that would like to talk about the Butterfield Zone Change?
Clear it out in here.
Yeah, that's pretty quick. You wanna invite the, the folks from Leeser Villas back here? Okay? Yeah, no rocks.
No rocks.
I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Motion made by Councilwoman Beck.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Carden. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Discussion back up here. Any questions for the applicant or staff on this zone change?
Dave, will you remind me, remind me what the parking is in an area like this? Is it still like 2.5? Okay.
And we're, and that's, we're not doing an overlay, that's, it's got 2.5 spaces for... Okay.
Gotcha, gotcha. I, I think that, like, the area looks good for that. Um, I, there was a comment made by one of the commissioners about the contemporary look of the, and it, it is going to stand out, Dave pointed it out really well. I think it's, it's gonna, it is gonna stand out, so it's gonna be that much more work to make sure it is a good project, right? But if we look at the intention of the infill overlay zoning, this property is very, like, it, it's perfect for this, and so, it makes sense in my mind.
Yeah, I agree. Okay, if there's no other questions, I'd entertain a motion for item B.
I move to approve the ordinance for the Butterfield Zone Change, based on the findings that the proposal is consistent with the general plan and that the proposal meets the intent of the infill overlay zone.
Motion made by Councilman Took.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Beck. A roll call vote here. Councilman Carden.
Yes.
Councilman Took.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Thank you. Item B is approved. Thank you, Taylor, appreciate it. You betcha. Come, come up here real quick.
Come to the microphone and tell us your name.
Serial number, just your name.
Taylor Butterfield. Um, we were wanting to keep the fence that's, uh, by the four-plex on the north, and I don't know if this has already been addressed. They said that we would find out in this meeting if we could just keep that fence instead of having to do a masonry fence, which is sometimes required. I don't know if...
Dave, will you speak to that?
Yeah, I might need to take a minute to, to look into that, just a little bit further. Um, it's my understanding that a masonry wall is required where a project abuts single-family homes but not other multifamily developments. Um...
Well, then...
Do you mind if I just take, like, it won't take more than a minute?
I think the rule on it was if there was, like, four units or more, and since we were three, they said that they might be able to leave that.
I appreciate that, so...
That's like the notes on there.
Yeah, memory jogged. Um, we do require masonry walls, um, on the boundaries of infill overlay projects, but where, um, projects would have four or fewer units, like Mr. Butterfield just mentioned, the council has the ability to waive the requirement for the masonry wall, um, provided that some other type of suitable fence and suitable would be left up to the council to decide, um, is used. So, in this case, um, I'll be real honest, I don't know what type of fence is existing there today.
Looks like a vinyl fence.
A white vinyl fence, yeah.
If you go to the, the presentation, Jack, there's a picture, and there, there's a picture on the presentation that shows the fence really well.
The current fence?
Yeah.
One of the aerial.
Yeah, it shows the parking lot with the blue house to the right.
So, Dave, is that considered a suitable fence?
Oh. The way the ordinance reads, I think that's entirely up to the council to decide, really.
My only concern with looking at the picture is that half of it is six foot, and then that goes down to the three foot towards the parking lot. And it's, if you go down one more right there, so as it's coming across, right, it's six foot, and then it drops down to that three foot, I don't think it would be a problem if it was all six foot, but with it being that three foot fence, it...
No, I agree. I'm fine with the white vinyl.
'Cause the houses are going to be facing that other street, right?
Yeah, I think they have it dropped there for visibility when people are pulling out from that parking lot onto the road.
So would it still be a three foot fence if we...
Yeah, I mean, that's probably a little bit longer span than it would have to be.
Have to be, but that's why it's that way. And, I mean, we're, it's been that way for a long time.
And that's multi-house, multi-family housing?
It's a four-plex, I believe.
Yeah, it is. It would be, it would be a little incongruent to have this new project put in a masonry wall where...
But on that, what about on that other adjacent property, are they gonna have, next to that blue house, are they gonna have to put a masonry fence there, or a fence there?
They, yeah, the ordinance requires next to single family for the masonry wall.
So could they get away with the vinyl, but they would have to masonry on that side?
You know what? I apologize, but let me, let me go to the book here to...
And then the note on that one says to match the white vinyl, and then they have us doing, uh, curb stopping for the parking lot for that, so I don't know if that helps as far as, like, if people in the parking lot would drive through it or something like that, if that's an issue, but. They did have it for matching the white vinyl.
Your parking is, is...
Black car by the blue in the back, on the right side.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you'd be parking, like, facing the blue house.
Okay.
So you'd come in and turn to the left.
Okay. But would you be parking lot against the current white vinyl fence as well?
No.
Okay, so parking just on that side?
Yep.
Gotcha.
Like flag lot.
Yeah, you'd certainly have, have, you'd need some sort of fence. To go in between that house and your, your tenants, or your, or the, the people buying there, pulling in, right?
Yeah.
I don't know in which direction you're going.
The plan is the white, to match the white vinyl fence, and then also put, like, the concrete curbing, so that when they park, they're not gonna hit the fence, basically.
Yeah, for sure.
It's gonna run like a driveway.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's gonna be similar to what you have on the other, on the other...
The gray is the drive, right, on this image?
Right, yeah.
So, does our ordinance allow for discretion with us, Dave, that there's no, there's no fence on that, uh, west side, if you will? It allows our discretion because it's not more than four units, not four units or more, that we could say white vinyl fence instead of masonry?
I believe so. Let me read this. Um, straight out of Title 15. An exception to the requirement to install a masonry wall where a multifamily use abuts a single-family residential use or district, uh, may be waived for projects that have four or fewer multifamily units, where the city council finds that a different type of fence or wall is sufficient. So yes, you'd have that, that ability to, to adjust, waive, change that requirement.
I think a question for you to consider is, what would you like to see there, right? In terms of, you've got this parking that's gonna happen on, adjacent to a, a single-family home, it's gonna be whatever it is. Um, I think you've got some garage units, but they're connected to the house right on the, on the east side of the property, right? And so you'll, you might have some angled parking or something agai- against that property line to the, to the west, right?
Is that landscaped?
Pardon?
Isn't it landscaped on that side?
Yeah, there is a buffer of landscaping, I think, right, immediately adjacent to the fence, right? So I think the question you can consider is, what kind of fence do you want to see there? Put yourself in their shoes as the applicant, put yourself in the shoes of the, of the home that's there.
Yeah, I guess...
I like uniformity and have the whole thing a white vinyl fence.
I kinda lean towards that, too, but I, I think, was it Taylor and...
Kaylee.
Kaylee? Katie? Kaylee?
Kaylee.
Kaylee, uh, that I, I think getting with our team of making sure that's sufficient, that, that, you know, your, your car's parking there, um, I'm with you, that, that's different than a regular home and the way they pull in, and so, enough curbing there or enough kind of stop there that doesn't ever get, uh, somebody accidentally backing in. I mean, accidents happen, but...
And Mayor, I can, I don't mean to interrupt.
Yeah.
But to speak to that, there's something on the order of 10 feet of space there for landscaping, so, you know, typically...
Oh, in the plans right now.
Yeah, between the curb and the fence, so...
Oh.
I don't think we'd have to worry about, you know, like a trailer hitch.
They are not gonna do this. They can't do this.
Yeah, that is correct, yeah. There would be landscape space between...
Yeah, let me be specific. The black, the parking that's, that's for the existing unit, they can't do this where they're parking immediately adjacent to the fence. I think that's what you're talking about, right, Mayor?
So there'd be some protection there.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's where, that's where I guess I'd, I'd be okay getting approvals from, and saying, okay, we don't need masonry if you're not that close.
I agree.
Yeah.
Because that, if, if I'm the next-door neighbor there, then maybe I'd have some issue with that.
I think, I'd be fine with the vinyl fence there.
Okay?
So we need to amend our motion. Took, how do you feel about that?
It's been passed, so you would make a motion to reconsider the item, and then, once that, you reconsider it, then you make the motion new again with the new condition.
Or the Butterfields could come back to another meeting, which...
Go through the whole process and...
I was gonna say, you gotta pay $15,000 to start all over again. There is no double jeopardy.
I move to reconsider the Butterfield Zone Change.
Motion made by... Motion made by Councilman Carden?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Took, all in favor say yes?
Yes.
Oh, excuse me, that's probably a roll call vote, Councilman Carden?
Yes.
Councilman Took?
Yes.
And Councilwoman, Councilwoman Beck?
Yes.
Okay. Motion made to reconsider, and what are we reconsidering for here?
Um, the white vinyl fence, so I would just, I would move to approve the ordinance for the Butterfield Zone Change based on the findings and proposal is consistent with general plans and that the proposed, proposal meets the intent of the infill overlay zone and making the ex, uh, exception for a vinyl fence in lieu of a stone masonry fence.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Carden, seconded by Councilwoman Beck, a roll call vote again, Councilman Took.
Yes.
Councilman Carden?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck?
Yes.
Okay, that's approved. Thank you guys, appreciate you. Okay, item C, ordinance for Pacific Horizon Zone Change.
Again, Mr. Mayor, thank you, this property was discussed as we were talking about a zone change several months ago on the property that's adjacent to it, um, to the south. Where some folks that just submitted plans, I believe, earlier this week to move forward with a, kind of a strip retail development that would be constructed again um, to the south, what we're talking about tonight. Specifically tonight, the proposal is just to, um, change the zoning from residential office to commercial two. Uh, we have looked at a concept plan for, um, the subject property. Think they have ample room to do what they like to do there, we're anxious to see, um, the kind of development that would be consistent with the River Bridge Event Center. Again, the site that is between, uh, the event center property and the subject property they're talking about now. And then this property, uh, seems like a, um, really beneficial evolution and just kinda, kinda series of changes for that part of the community. Particularly Rec Center is under construction on the other side of Main Street, different things like that, so. I'm gonna keep it really simple, the proposal is consistent with the general plan. Staff has recommended it be approved, the planning commission's recommended that it be approved. I could go on, but it's, I think, very straightforward.
Is a, a bake like that not allowed in residential office?
You know, there are some provisions like, uh, that pertain to drive-throughs and different things like that that.
That was my only question.
Make it a challenge.
Any questions for Dave before public hearing about this? Okay, I'd entertain a motion to go into public hearing.
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Took.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Carden, all in favor say yes?
Yes.
We're in public hearing for item C, ordinance for Pacific Horizon Zone Change. Anybody would like to speak to this? She had to be coaxed into it, but she's coming.
My name is Claysey Crandall, I'm with Pacific Horizon, representing, um, covering for Mike, he has a standing date with his hunting season, as it is now fall.
We know Mike well enough to know that that's true.
I got roped into this, his backup, because he had to leave. Um, but no, we're just excited for the opportunity of growth, especially in this area of the community with the Rec Center across and the other development on the south, so we're excited to hopefully start as soon as possible.
Awesome, thank you, Claysey. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Carden?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Took, all in favor say yes?
Yes.
Discussion back up here, any questions for staff or anybody on this one?
Makes sense.
I'll go ahead and move to approve the ordinance for Pacific Horizon Zone Change based on the finding that the proposal is consistent with the general plan.
Second.
Motion made by Councilwoman Beck, seconded by Councilman Carden, maybe before I call for a vote really quick, uh, this property was, uh, discussed, now it's been what, three, four months ago, maybe six months ago? With an adjacent property owner, um, and discussed with us, emails to us, messages to us online about it as well. Um, but again, it goes to speak to the changes that happening in a, in a growing community. Uh, because we were accused of destroying farmland and heritage and everything else by the property just south of this uh, having a different use, and now this property is, uh, is the applicant for a different use, so. Things change, um, again, factual based rather than emotion based sometimes gets us further down the road. Uh, there's been a motion and a second and a roll call vote is now, uh, what I'm calling for, Councilman Carden?
Yes.
Councilman Took?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Beck?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, got, I got stuck there for a minute, you're supposed to hit me.
Just staring.
Yeah, you're supposed to hit, reset. Uh, item C's approved, takes us to D, for tonight, the Crumble Zone Change. Request, Mr. David G.
Again, thank you, nine hundred east, just south of US Highway six, the Madison Business Park, it's been around for a while. Never got more than half constructed, and, uh, one thing that's.
They're talking like twenty plus years.
Certainly, yeah. That I know, closer to thirty maybe, really. Um, and, uh, again, I'm trying to go with maybe the, the more succinct version tonight, but, um, there's been a couple of things that have happened here, we've reviewed and amended development plan for the project that would impact not only this part of the properties that are part of that, that, uh, business park development, but also, uh, property over here, really to, to make it ready for contemporary kind of development. Um, but the specific question that's before the council tonight simply has to do with the area that's outlined in black there and employing the development enhancement overlay, that's not really the get out of jail free card, but it is a way for the city council to approve a project that doesn't meet all of our typical zoning requirements. As has been the case with other projects where this is, where that zoning overlay has typically been used. The development enhancement overlay, tonight we're talking about parking and landscaping, um, I'll forego those, but can come back if you'd like. Um, we're talking about this part of the site up here and the construction, oh, excuse me, of a retail building, a building, might have guessed, house of Crumble Cookie business would have a drive-through and, um, does not meet our parking requirements. I think that's the biggest issue. That being said, um, for a variety of reasons, uh, we as staff and the planning commission concurred, we feel like there actually is ample parking in the area, I appreciate how the site is designed. Uh, again, this being the subject building here, uh, to where there would be substantial length for, call it queuing, you know, people waiting in line in a drive-through. I think in all likelihood that would be a bigger issue than having, um, a particular number of parking stalls on the site. So as designed, um, I think, uh, not just me, but others on staff as well are comfortable with the layout. Um, and really view this business being here as a way to inject some life into property that has been underutilized forever. Uh, great visibility from Highway six, not direct access on Highway six, but still a very accessible site. Um, uh, it commands, you know, use that's gonna generate some traffic and maybe with that, you know, provide some support for other businesses in the area and that sort of a thing. It's like this has been just kind of a little bit of a dark corner in, you know, really what's kind of our main, main commercial area in the community today, so. Again, I could go on, um, but I, I am excited that, uh, the proposals before the council tonight, I think it's a good thing. Uh, a little bit, um, saddened to think that we're gonna lose that, that use on Main Street, so we'll see what backfills it there, but that's, that is a loss truly, I mean, for, for the city and, you know, things that we've tried to promote and encourage there, but an upgrade, I'd say, over here too, so.
Dave, quick question, on the, what we'll call Plan North, where the drive-through is coming out, um, is that gonna cut into that parking lot in the Vasa parking lot, for lack of better words, or is it just gonna go back into ninth east?
Back into ninth east, so using this as an image, um, in fact, right now, about half of what we see there that's in asphalt actually belongs to the property owner there.
Okay.
Um, the remaining part would be utilized, um, as part of the egress from the drive-through.
Is there any concern about the only, the one access point from ninth east?
There would be more than one, there's one, there's one that's proximate to the business. That would be the most used, you're talking about this one right here. You'd also be able to get there via, via the access down here.
Okay, so we would count those as access points from those other spots?
We would, yeah.
That was my question.
Yeah, you could, you could navigate that, that parking area and so forth, and get through there.
And, you know, what a better way to, you know, go get your workout in and then go grab some cookies, so.
Vice versa.
And then you gave her.
When it's a Biscoff cookie, you're in trouble, right?
Questions for Dave before public hearing of this item?
No.
Thank you, Dave, applicant's here, you've, you've hung out.
Yeah, I have a question for the applicant, Casey, can you approach the bench?
Please.
Please.
Unbridled.
I just want to know, under oath, you're under oath, what is your favorite Crumble cookie?
Ooh, that's a good question, um, I think that I was enjoying, um, you know, I get the benefit of, of trying these things pretty, pretty regularly. Um, the new cake stuff that, that, that we've got going out there is, is, um, pretty good.
It's called cake stuff?
Well, there's just, just, I mean, we've done the trace laches, we've done the cinnamon squares, we've done the.
Oh, okay, I love.
If you haven't tried the, the new cake stuff, it's pretty good.
Okay.
So it's, it's not Crumble Cookie anymore, if you, if you're not a big fan, it's, it's now called Crumble.
Cause they do more than just cookies.
Banana pudding right now.
The banana pudding right now is, is very popular and doing well, but you, you can always go back to the OG and the, the, the.
The sugar cookie.
The sugar cookie is, is a big hit and obviously the, the chocolate chips.
Okay, that was my question for you.
Yeah, well, that was, hey, can I say one, can I say one thing as far as that, this goes? Um, the way the planning commission handled, um, my, the agenda items, uh, was much more favorable for that meeting than it was for me. Um, I was able to go through my items, um, everybody approved it. I left the meeting and I replenished the room that was full because of anteacres of Crumble. Now there's not very many people, so I'm not as inclined to.
But what you're doing is, is before your item is approved, you're saying how much better the planning commission ran a meeting than maybe the council ran a meeting.
Mayor, I would, I would say, you can take that for what it's worth.
Okay.
Um, but I enjoyed my time here.
Okay, okay. Might have just saved it, that's, enjoyed his time. Okay, any questions, uh, oh, I'd, uh, have we went into public hearing yet? Okay, motion to go into public hearing, I'd entertain that.
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Carden?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Took, all in favor say yes?
Yes.
We're in public hearing, anybody? Once, twice, sold. I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Motion made by Councilwoman Beck, seconded by Councilman Took, all in favor say yes?
Yes.
Discussion back up here, any questions for the applicant or staff?
Just one, Casey, so building on this piece of land takes away a crucially important spot for, um, campaigning signs. So can we still, with the Crumble Cookie there, put signs on the property?
I think Vaughn will, uh, probably.
Kidding. Yeah, please, please end with, I'm just kidding.
I'm, I'm gonna have to defer to the HOA to make sure that, that's right. No, um, by the way, and I'll just say this while everybody's here because, um, but, so I used to live here in Spanish Fork, went to Spanish Fork High, actually before the meeting, did a little loop around the, around the high school, just my word, what a, what a improvement you guys have all made, and it's, it's a pleasure to be associated, I'm a Salem resident, but, uh, um, obviously do a lot of business and, and surroundings, so. Um, I, I joke that I enjoyed my time here, but it was, it was actually pretty telling to know that you guys do a good job, so thank you.
Sell that home in Salem, we'll find you something in Spanish, come on back anytime. Okay, if there's no other questions, uh, for, uh, the staff here, I would entertain a motion for item D.
I move to approve the ordinance, uh, for the Crumble Zone Change based on the finding that it meets the intent of the development enhancement overlay.
Motion made by Councilman Took.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Beck, a roll call vote here, Councilman Carden?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck?
Yes.
And Councilman Took?
Yes.
Item D is approved, thank you, thanks for hanging out with us.
Now that it's approved, Mayor, let me just say, as a neighbor, Casey's one of the finest. He was my neighbor for, I don't know, ten years.
That's why I moved.
Probably. He, notice I'm the one saying it, he's not saying it back, but as a neighbor, Casey was one of the finest, fantastic. Fan, fantastic friend and, and a good, good human, great family, great family.
Thank you, I, I, I'm, we're back. I don't know if you, Trig, Trig, uh, came back to Spanish Forks.
Oh, did he really?
I did not, I did not know that, oh, yeah, I did not know that.
Yeah, Trig was, Trig was a four-year-old and just cutest four-year-old, he's probably, not appreciating this right now, but. Great family.
He's a total man of a baseball player, I know that, holy cow, very good.
That's fun, that's fun.
Cool.
Tell him hello, Casey.
Okay, Mr. Vaughn Pukell, just gonna read us legalese about what we've done here tonight and correct us. Or just go over items A, B, and C. At least A, new business resolution approving amended UIPA interlocal agreement for sales tax pass-through.
Right, Mayor, council, the state law allows UIPA to collect sales tax from in, within their project areas. But the city has negotiated with them to have the sales tax generated within the, the VERC project area to be returned to the city. Um, or the city portion, yeah, city portion of it, so. So to do that, we need to amend the development, that's, excuse me, the development agreement, the interlocal agreement we have with them. Um, they, and that's what's before you tonight is that, that addend, that addendum to provide for that sales tax to come back to the city like it had been before the project area was established. Any questions on that?
I'll just add, this is a big deal, uh, I mean, it, with this, with the law as it was initially, about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a month was leaving, and there's some tweaks to the law, so it's a little bit less, but this is not small potatoes, and, and, uh, for UIPA, they said this is never how it was intended to be, so they were very, very good to say this, we're gonna, we're not gonna take any of this, cause it's not how it was intended, so. So grateful for that.
Very good. Any questions for Vaughn or staff on this? Okay, thank you, Vaughn, uh, I would entertain a motion for item A.
I move to accept the resolution approving amendment, uh, U, uh, UIPA interlocal agreement for sales ta- tax pass-through based upon the findings in the resolution and agreement.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Carden, seconded by Councilwoman Beck, a roll call vote here, Councilman Took?
Yes.
Councilman Carden?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Beck?
Yes.
Item A is approved, takes us to item B of, uh, the same kind of area, resolution provides the newly created VERC Industrial Park Infrastructure District to issue bonds and finance the construction of public infrastructure, and you can say the rest.
Yes, no problem. Um, as you know, we have the new public infrastructure district within the VERC industrial park. They are intending to issue bonds to finance the, the improvements that meet the goals of the public infrastructure district. A lot of the infrastructure there surrounding the airport, roads, power lines, water, sewer, the, lift stations, et cetera. But before they issue their bonds, the, the city and also the district will have incurred some costs. And this resolution just indicates the intent to reimburse for some of those costs. They have a look back period where they can reimburse, and includes things like property acquisition, any construction or installation of public improvements that benefit the project area. So that's all it is, is an intent, expression of intent to reimburse for costs that are incurred before the issuance of the bond. From the bond proceeds.
And like I, I probably stopped a little bit short of that bond, uh, Vaughn, but, uh, but bond proceeds that are improving the, the area, right?
Yes, the VERC.
Public infrastructure.
Industrial project area and the.
Within the VERC area or, cause I know there was a comment earlier that it was outside the area.
So, yeah, this is, I, first and foremost, this is a bond that will not be issued by us. This will be issued by a separate legal entity that was just created, um, and formally created, I think, last week. We got notice of it last week that the public infrastructure district was created, so they will be the ones that go through the process of, of noticing and, and having public hearings about it. And, and then eventually issuing if that's their desire. Uh, and so this is, Vaughn says, this is our saying to, to them specifically, we're doing work and we intend to get reimbursed for that. This enables us to get that look back, and, and they can put that into their covenants. There are some elements of infrastructure that will be outside of the. There are some elements of infrastructure that will be outside of the jur, outside of the boundary of that specifically, the road, uh, that has been, the right-of-way that has been purchased. Um, it connects two parts of it, but it does leave the current boundaries of, of the VERC project area, some of the water infrastructure and, and the power lines, those utilities will be around that road. So, yeah, they are outside of the current boundaries.
So let me re, maybe say what you just said and just what, how I heard it, to make sure I heard it correctly. So this, and, or we're just approving tonight the resolution to say that we're intending to get paid back for the money that we spent. When this group goes forward to actually issue that bond for the seventy-ish million dollars, they would have public hearings and that would be the time where they're talking more about what that seventy-five or seventy-ish million dollars is being used for.
Yep, exactly. Yeah, I think with bonds, there's, there are laws that say they can look back like sixty days unless you do something like this. And so if they don't bond until December or February, that look back period for expenditures would be limited based on that, those statutes. So this allows for today to be that look back sixty days prior, so, so that we can capture some of those funds.
My, my second question on that might, would be, is if, if entities or, or if those watching are interested in those, when we start to, when those monies are talked about, how would they be noticed? What is that noticing system like as a different entity?
Uh, that, that entity, the public infrastructure district, will do the noticing that's required by the, the Bonding Act, that, all the typical notice that we would do for our bonds.
Okay.
They will do the same type of notice.
Okay. So you would just go to the same website?
So on the state public web, state public meeting notice website, exactly.
So they can get the notices just like we do for our meetings?
Yes, they'll have to comply with that.
Okay.
So specifically, the, there's gonna be a road that will go from this point here and it will go-ish like this, connect here and then connect there. And there'll be, there'll be some utilities associated with it as well.
Got it.
Um, there was a comment asked about, uh, a group mentioning eminent domain or threatening eminent domain. I, I cannot speak for anything that they would have said, I can say that as a city, we've never talked about eminent domain and as it relates to these properties. Uh, we certainly haven't threatened it externally or internally. Um, and I can say that we paid, we paid the going rate, uh, maybe paid a little bit more. Uh, so there was no taking whatsoever associated with any purchases of the right-of-way. Initially, every land owner that sold to the, to the project, sold by their own accord, were in, were interested from the beginning, uh, for their own reasons, whatever they are. Um, and so I, I know nothing of, of that.
I guess to that note, Seth and Vaughn, you might be able to help with this too, is the only group, well, we're gonna talk about with the inland port area, the Utahland Port area or the VERC industrial area, the only groups that can really do the eminent domain on behalf of that group is right now is the city and then the PID group, and right now the PID hasn't even really started meeting to even have any of those conversations, correct?
Yeah, they've never met. They've never met.
So they wouldn't be, they wouldn't be doing that and those are the only groups that would be entitled to even...
Yeah, and there's nothing, there's nothing to discuss about eminent domain, right? The right-of-way's been purchased.
Right.
Yeah, there's no need.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Vaughn or staff on this one? Thank you, Vaughn. Uh, I would entertain a motion on item B if there's no other questions.
I'll go ahead and move to approve the resolution that provides that once the newly-created VERC Industrial Park Public Infrastructure District issues bonds to finance the construction of public infrastructure, it may use some of those proceeds to reimburse the PID and the city for expenditures that occurred prior to the bond issuance. The reimbursement is allowed for property acquisition, construction, the installation of public improvements benefiting the PID and the VERC project area.
Motion made by Councilwoman Beck.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Cardon, a roll call vote here, Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
Councilman Took.
Yes.
And Councilman Cardon.
Yes.
Item B is approved, takes us to item C, the Biz Solar Program Power Sales Agreement.
Mayor and Council, U M P A is the interlocal agency that we are a member of that is our power supplier, that's who we buy our wholesale power from and then we retail it to our customers. They've created the Biz Solar Program, it's a, basically a, a opportunity for large users that, that generate larger than twenty-five kilowatts to have this large solar system and then sell that solar power to U M P A. So the agreement, you know, on your agenda is both a, a power purchase agreement where they agree to sell that power that they generate from their solar system, their solar project, uh, from the sun that's in our solar system to, to U M P A, and then the, the agreement that we're a party of is the interconnection agreement, it's, that's the agreement that governs how the, the connections and all the details of, of how to build and connect to the system, um, will be, will be handled, so that's the basis for these two agreements. They're just one right after another in the, in the combined PDF. Um, so this, this, uh, user or this generator, solar generator would be H D Fowler Company, that's a new, new, uh, business in the, kind of the Spanish Springs, uh, Business Park, and they'll be selling their power at four point three cents per kilowatt hour to U M P A. Any questions?
Vaughn, would you, we, we allow, we have a resolution that gives the power superintendent the ability to sign, uh, the template for what we would probably classify as residential, right, that less than twenty-five kilowatt hours. We have not seen one of these before, this is the first one that U M P has done within our boundaries, uh, for a large project. Um, it probably, if we are going to see more, and, and I don't know that we will, but if we start to see more of these, uh, it would probably be reasonable for us to consider giving the power superintendent that same authority to sign these as long as they follow the template.
It's the same template, so probably would be, but again, we probably don't see a lot of them.
Yeah.
Very often, as much as we would residential, but...
And so, because this is the first one, we put it on new business to bring it here, but if we don't do that resolution, I think we'd probably put it on consent from here on out.
Yeah.
You may only see it once a year, maybe once every two or three, uh, but at that point, it'd be somewhat more routine. That seem consistent with thoughts you might have about this type of issue, this type of matter, okay?
Yeah, I'd agree with that.
Shane shaking his head somewhere.
Yeah, Shane.
Shane.
Shane's wondering why it's here in the, it's, why it's here in the first place.
I haven't been done on this one.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Vaughn.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that. Uh, any, uh, any other questions on item C? If not, I entertain a motion to approve item C.
I move to authorize the mayor to sign Biz Solar Program Power Sales Agreement.
Motion made by Councilman Cardon.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Took, a roll call vote here, Councilman Cardon.
Yes.
Councilwoman Beck.
Yes.
And Councilman Took.
Yes.
Item C is approved, takes us to the discussion plan, section of our agenda. Okay, is good for...
Save the light stuff for the end.
And no close session.
And no close session after this, okay? Discussion of the general plan update.
Thank you.
Not a lot to report tonight, but did wanna share a couple of things relative to, um, some very, very raw information that we have, this survey, but probably is gonna be the last citywide kind of public outreach effort that we'll make relative to the general plan and stationary plan projects that we've been talking about. And it also is probably the last time we do any outreach that involves both of those two projects together. And recently, we've made a decision to, to put them on separate tracks for a few different reasons, but, um, wanted to share a couple of things that we already, I think, can talk a little bit about relative to, to what we can gleam initially from the, uh, results of this survey, finished up on the nineteenth, just a couple of days ago. Um, but probably more than that, I'm gonna go back to the last page of what Mariani Stook with Design Workshop put together in this memo, um, and start from here, uh, and just talk about next steps for a second. So the bottom of page seven, we will deliver, um, and it might be on the third of September in your meeting, Design Workshop's analysis of not just the, the quantitative questions that were part of the survey, but also the comments that were provided, which after reviewing what we have here tonight, we think it's really important to go through the comments because there are a couple of things that don't jive, uh, just in looking at, at some of the numbers. So we'll put that together and we'll present that. Um, but, uh, for me, as we get down, you know, about two-thirds of the way through those bullet points, um, we look to be at fifty percent with a draft land use element of the general plan by the end of September. Um, and frankly, going from fifty percent to a hundred percent usually moves pretty quick. So we'll have that to discuss with the, with the council. We have a joint planning commission work session planned for October. I think this will probably be a pretty important topic to spend some time on, uh, in that forum and, uh, look to have land use element, you know, basically wrapped up before we start to go different directions with the holidays, you know, so hopefully by the end of November and to anticipate that the stationary plan will bleed over into, into two thousand and twenty-five, hopefully having that done in, um, February or so. So just some things to look forward relative to, to next steps. Um, frankly, everything that happens going forward now should be traceable back to input that was received, you know, through the different avenues that have been taken over the course of the past now, just about nine months. Um, and, uh, we do have additional work going on, week in and week out, have some very important meetings next week, for example, relative to some of that. Um, any questions about that? There's not a lot to share there. Uh, does anybody jumping in? I'm trying to be a little bit quick here, so I, the survey focused largely on a couple of different, you know, potential scenarios, um, something or a concept that had been floating around for a few months. Uh, the first scenario, you know, kinda set things up with the idea that, uh, at least potentially, as we look forward to areas of Spanish Fork that still have development potential, um, where should future development be focused and, and maybe how intense should that future development be? This particular scenario, um, provided some weight to the idea that, uh, we do have vacant land around the Spanish Fork Parkway, US Highway six intersection. It also touched on, uh, the potential for redevelopment along Main Street downtown and the idea that, you know, maybe that's something we should really focus on with significant upzonings and, and that sort of a thing. Um, and then you might recall that we've talked about the north gateway, up around where the new interchange is being constructed, the south gateway down around the Salem Benjamin Interchange, and where we think the commuter rail stop quite possibly will be located in Spanish Fork, kind of more at Center Street. Um, the pie charts there are indicative, this is, this is again a raw way to put it, of the public's level of interest in seeing, um, a lot of sizable new development constructed in those different areas based on this scenario, so not much interest along Main Street at all, not a lot more interest, um, out around US Highway six. One of the things we're trying to reconcile is the, um, the information that we got around the Salem Benjamin Interchange and as we look at scenario two, that'll, that'll be clarified a little bit, but clearly, um, the idea of having, uh, significant development particularly up around, um, the new twenty-seven-hundred North Interchange, that's very broadly supported and the level of intensity, um, I rather, I should probably say, the idea that development there, new development be pretty intense, uh, also supported very well. Frankly, I don't think that probably is much of a surprise to a lot of us, but, um, and similar feelings again about the stationary plan. So, Jack, do you mind going to the scenario two real quick? So frankly, based on the survey results, this is really, I think, going to be the foundation of a land use map and some different things going forward, certainly more so than scenario one, just based on the feedback and, you know, for example, looking at this with, um, it kinda how things stack up in the Salem Benjamin area versus the, uh, pie chart for scenario one, we need to figure out, you know, why there's that discrepancy. Um, but, uh, by and large, the support for intense development along the I-15 corridor is pretty strong. Um, there's some support for additional development that has some kind of intensity, maybe intensity that is greater than what the general plan currently calls for along the Spanish Fork Parkway corridor. Um, there's some interest out there, but, um, it's certainly much lighter than along the I-15 corridor, um, so just speaking very high level, this is a representation of what the community seems to be pretty comfortable with. Incidentally, I think this syncs up very, very well with just kinda best practices from, uh, city planning perspective, looking at things from a very high level. You would expect to have your intense land uses around the biggest transportation facility in the state and, you know, things like mass transit and the like, all of which will be found along that I-15 corridor. It's also where you'll find other uses that are complementary to intense residential development, services, shopping opportunities, employment opportunities and everything like that, so, um, inasmuch as it's not a big surprise, these steps that have been taken, I think, are very, very important in terms of building a record and reasons for decisions that do get made, you know, as we go from kinda just the conceptual conversation stage to, well, here's how you do it, and that's where we're going now, is to, here's how you do it. So that's what I have for tonight. Um, and like I said, this is pretty raw, uh, but I am looking forward to a polished-up version of, of this that will be compiled with, um, a synopsis, kind of like an executive summary of the previous input that we'd received, which I think will be a great kinda, for me, it's almost a benchmark in terms of a point in the project, um, but also that public input and that record, you know, that, that kinda becomes the marching orders going forward as well.
Yeah.
Thanks, Dave.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks for the update, Dave, appreciate it. Stay tuned for more discussion, uh, of the general plan, like, uh, like what was said here. We've got some other things coming up in September and then October and then the end of the year as well, so appreciate all the good work and appreciate everybody taking those surveys and, so we can, uh, make the, the, uh, the future decisions on this. Okay, any other questions, comments about that item, discussion item, no action and no close session needed tonight, so unless there's something else burning...
I move that we adjourn.
Motion made by Councilman Cardon, seconded by Councilwoman Beck, all in favor say yes?
Yes.
We adjourn. Thanks, everybody, for joining us, appreciate it.